We have no audio. There you go. You're good, sorry.
All right, so public comment, is anybody online? All right, then let's start with the candidate Keith.
Okay, I was just gonna talk about the thing on the agenda that's number 15. So do I wait till you get to number 15, or do I talk now?
You will.
It sounds now.
Yeah, if you want to talk now, then...
And then I just came to see if there were any questions on item number 15 on the agenda. I'm here with Mark and Carol, all of us, maybe for recycling and so forth. And it's in regards to, we look at number 15, the bins at the transfer station.
Let me just explain, it's a Help See bins. We have several bins there now at the recycling, where people put clothing in. You might have put your clothes in there, but we're not getting money for these. And one of the bins is a Help See bin, that's the name of the company. And they indicated to us on the recycling committee that if, that we can work out something with them where we can put clothes in there, we can put four bins there, we can put clothes there, and they will pay us for them. Do you have the details?
Yeah.
So it's a way of bringing, it may not a lot, but it's a way of bringing so many into the town.
Yeah, I have met with Sal a couple of times, and with Don. And right now, we, there's four bins at the transfer station. One of them is Help See, and then there's three other ones. And from a maintenance standpoint, quite often, stuff gets left outside, or the bins don't get emptied when they should, so it doesn't always look the greatest. Help See has a fantastic reputation for keeping everything clean and collected. They're very responsive, if you call them for any reason whatsoever. And actually, they had an open house that I went to for a couple of hours, actually. And I was just amazed at what they do. They collect all these types of textiles, they recycle. There's a little write-up that I gave to Sal. I can read it if you want me to read it, but um...
No, I think that was part of the...
Part of the work, okay, great. So in addition to what Carol's saying, that the town gets paid for it, it's also another way to think it's nice and neat, and maybe even encouraging more people to bring their recycled materials to the station, as opposed to throwing them in the trash. Anybody have any questions about it?
We'd ask the other containers.
Right, correct. And we'd have four Help See bins, nice and neat, and make some money for the town. And the other ones, you know, wouldn't have to worry about any maintenance out of the stuff like that.
It looks like we can just cancel it with 30 days notice.
Yeah, exactly. It's not really like a contract, contract job, like you said. If we didn't like it, yeah, we could just say, you know what, we don't want to do it anymore. But I'm pretty confident that we would all love it. They do a lot of work with organizations, you know, to help raise money for different types of organizations also. It's pretty cool, I was very impressed, yes.
Can you think of any, and I'm just trying to be thorough, I don't know of any, but can you think of any downsides?
Wow, that's a tough question. I really, you know, we talked about that length in our committee. And when I went to the Help See, you know, open house and stuff like that, and I met with, there were a bunch of other towns there too, when I talked to them. And everything was so positive, it's like, I don't think there's any downside whatsoever. I mean, we make some money to keep it nice and clean. We encourage people in town to, you know, recycle more of their textiles, shoes, and clothing and stuff like that, as opposed to throwing it in the trash. It's awesome.
Yeah, Jean, it's really a win-win for the town. What we looked at over the course of months and months and months is that some of the metal cans or bins there weren't empty. And the companies don't come and get them. We've called them, and we've said, we can come, they don't come. And so it's really just an eyesore. And people can't even stuff anything in there anymore. The poor public works people are stuck, you know, having to clean up the stuff that's put all around the bins. And these people have, I mean, they have such a great reputation. And they give back to the family, give the textiles back to the community. And they said, well, you know, we're happy to put up bins, and they will come on a regular basis. And if we don't like it, they'll take them all away.
Do you know where this stuff goes? Do they donate stuff?
Yeah.
A large portion of what they collect is actually resold. And that's part of where they get their revenue. In addition to recycling, they actually repurpose a lot of it. A lot of it goes overseas, but they do resell a lot of the stuff, surprisingly, you know, because good stuff gets donated. And they also said that, you know, I guess you're gonna have to figure out to get the other three removed, if for whatever reason, Help See said they've been through this before, if the other folks don't remove, you know, the big bins like they're supposed to or whatever, they would remove them for us. And then they take those bins, and they repurpose them with their logos, and they paint them, and get them all nice and neat and stuff like that. So in case you need help with that, they are available to help with that too.
Yeah, there's no downside to it.
And do you know how much money, roughly, how many tons, or how much money we'd be getting right now? So, you know, right now, the money goes to either Goodwill, or Voice Club, or Girl Club of America, education, there's a bunch of charities the money goes to right now.
I had an email, because Eric, who's chairperson of our committee, had done an analysis.
I mean, roughly, talking to a couple of grand a year.
Yeah. Right on the button, a couple of grand a year. So, you know, and you know, we talked about it in our committee, that a couple of grand doesn't sound like a lot of money, you know. But when you think about our budget, I don't want to get into a big thing or whatever, but a huge portion of our budget, we don't have any control over. It's, you know, school and education and all that. So the discretionary piece, if we can positively affect discretionary piece by a couple thousand dollars, hey, what the heck, maybe we'll do it.
Steve Winter, Monson Road.
Steve Winter, 59 Monson Road. Actually, just regarding number 13, that's on the list for tonight. The EDC Economic Development Commission was out. Yeah, we're taking it to try to push a ballot measure in November. I wanted to thank Attorney Moreno, I want to thank Will and the clerk staff for making that happen. And I know that they're looking for language to kind of clarify things. We actually had some written up, what was available when the ballot secret, the signature secret were out to talk to the public. I'm happy to give this to you, and make it available to the selectmen if they like. I think it's important that the, whatever clarifying information that we draft up represents what we are actually telling people when we're out there, and just make sure it has the same message. So I'll leave these here with anyone who wants them, and we can talk more about it when 13 comes up.
Can you just repeat again what this form is?
So this was a little bit of clarifying information. So we were out trying to gather signatures, and try to answer the question of what was, why are we trying to make that change? And it started out a little bit about, you know, like restaurants want to come here, and they were told no because they were wanting to serve alcohol, you know, that we didn't want in town. The way I actually brokered, you know, a lot of the signature gathering was by talking about the economics of it, and like that, once you have a nice family business that wants to come to town, and you're saying no to them because there's a very antiquated piece of language, it's free tax dollars that are going out the door, and we should try to remove those barriers. So that went over a lot of people. And so this may speak a little bit more to the social aspect of it, but really the economic side of it, that was the driver of us being successful in the signature gathering. But I'm happy to talk more about it.
Can you let us know if anyone refused to sign, and what their...
I would say, me personally, I probably had anywhere from one to two dozen people saying, no, thank you. I had one gentleman very promptly usher me off his property because I did not see his no trespassing sign. He was not, just didn't talk to anybody, and anything, I didn't even get to talk about it. But the majority of people I talked to, probably eight out of 10 people said, sure, I'll sign. And there was a lot of people who were just completely ignorant of that piece of language, even being...
Did you get anyone to tell you a rationale for, you know, why they, a reason why they didn't want to sign, or...
I've had everybody tell me, you know, you know, there's, and there's seven people in our commission who aren't getting signatures. But me personally, I had people tell me everything from, I don't recover alcohol, and I don't think we should have alcohol in town. I mean, we have the liquor stores, so if you want alcohol, we can get. I think the restaurants in town are doing fine. I don't want to see any competition coming in. This is my favorite restaurant, why would you want to do that? I saw people who were hesitant because they like the town exactly the way it is, don't change anything, nothing's perfect.
No, thank you, that's right.
But there was overwhelming support from the public.
Aaron Stevens, Do Little Drive.
Hey, everybody, my name is Aaron Stevens, 52 Do Little Drive. I'm here tonight on behalf of Amity Youth Football, which is, we're, I'm here to discuss the field use waiver for, which is number four on the agenda tonight. And we, the board, have requested to waive the fee of the airport field for us. This past year it's been busy. We decided to withdraw from the former Northern Pop Warner League and join Shoreline Youth Football. This league is strictly Connecticut-based and does not participate in any national-level play. There are also the league that our high school athletes participate in. Amity Youth Football is a nonprofit organization. We pride ourselves on keeping registration as low as possible in order to reach as many athletes as possible. This year alone, we have over 90 registered participants, of which 40% are already Bethany residents. In terms of our fees, all the money is used for the purchase of equipment and reconditioning of existing equipment, as well as insurance, medics, legal officials meeting the referees. If anyone has any questions, please ask, I'm happy to give you as much detail as possible to make this an easy decision.
I have a question, I was wondering, what are the fees?
So our registration fee is $275 for early bird registration, which goes up to $325 after our early bird registration ends. And then we have $50 off for each sibling participant.
Do you have any, like sliding scale for a family that might be low income?
Absolutely, and we have it within our bylaws that if there is any participant that wants to participate that can't, all they have to do is approach any member of the board. We would give them a free waiver, and they would join our league for free, absolutely no cost.
Thank you.
I'm going to need approval of the minutes for July 1 regular meeting, and the August 5 regular meeting.
Who approved the July 1, 2025 minutes?
Sorry, I just want to say that the minutes mentioned attached to the previous minutes that were never attached, so I don't know. It's a little annoying to me that I handed Paula the attachment, and she never followed through. You know, you would imagine that when there's a request that is made, and then it's approved, that there would be follow-through. So is it okay with you guys if I go back through my notes or my packet of material and look for that attachment and give it? I think it was a series of emails with Paula. Because I didn't want people at the meeting, or the public, to think I was making up what I was saying. And so if it's okay with you, I will either reprint the emails and submit to whoever you tell me to submit to. For addition, adding to the, where is it, to the...
Well, do you want to get us those emails, and we can just, table July now?
No, no, I'm happy to second the approval of the July minutes. As, you know, if you see, the July minutes just mentioned that the attachment is missing, that's an ongoing thing. I'm happy to approve these minutes for July, and then just either send you the minutes, or send you the attachment. I would like them to be attached, just for consistency, you know, it was...
You're saying they should have been attached?
They should have been attached from the March minutes, right. And you can see, it makes sense, because we're talking about emails, and they're just not attached.
So we mentioned it, July, you know, we...
Right, so there's no need to hold up the meeting, the minutes for July.
All right, yeah, get us those, we'll go.
Do you want me to send them to you, or do you want me to...
Send them to my, send them myself in a day.
Okay, right.
Motion all clear. And the approval of the minutes for the August 5 meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, and item four, we just heard discussion of possible action of the reservation waiver for the Amity Youth Football. Any more questions for...
Yeah, we have to check about what we did this last year. Do you remember, did we charge a fee, or...
Yes, we did.
Last year, the, and I think, tell me if I'm wrong, the reason why we charged the fee was because they were charging their participants a field fee. And they were doing it on a national level, which then they went for like, you know, additional funding as well. So we charged for that purpose. I believe when I talked to Aaron, and then Jennifer, I think it was Jennifer, the only field fee they're charging for, or they're hoping to charge for, is the use during games at the high school.
Correct, so on that circumstance, we collect $2, and that's strictly for the use of the high school field. That goes directly back into making sure that the field were allowed to use.
And what costs do we infer, when we pay for the porta potty thing?
We cover those. We cover those ourselves. So the porta potty is there for the flea market currently. And then as soon as that's pulled, you guys usually pull that mid-September, we put our own porta potty there, and you guys have no additional fee from us.
We usually leave the porta potties till November 1st. The last couple of years, we left it longer, and we made the playoffs. And I think the fee might have been a little late last time. So we typically, unless you guys get another one that I don't know, but typically we pay for that through November, or through November 1st, anyway.
Okay, then I'll have to apologize, because as far as I know, we do have a porta potty somewhere. But the middle school has their own porta potty as well. But I'm not really sure where Michael's coming from, but I'll look into it.
Well, ours will be there till November 1st. Can I get another one?
Questions?
I'm just trying to figure out, the, what is the exact request payment that you waived the field use fee? And what is the current charge for them? I think it's $375 per day. Last year, we had a reduced fee that was a total of $1,200 for the season. But this year, having moved just over to Shoreline, which is the football league that our high school plays with, we are a brand-new league, and don't have necessarily the funds, and would hate to see something happen to the league itself trying to cover bills. So if we could apply for the waiver of the fee, and if it's something I need to come back to every year, then I certainly will. But if we can approve it, at least for a season down the trial basis, we'd really appreciate it.
I'm looking to add to that, if it helps at all for reservations. Right now, what we had for, and there's another one that's going to need to come under other, because it just popped up today. We do have several sports, so there would just need to be guidelines on what parameters is there for total waiver, what's partial waiver, and not a waiver.
And right now, we don't have any policies, please.
Right now, what we've done is for people who are not for profit, we've done one-third of the cost of whatnot. So if they did three times a week for practice, we've charged them for one day instead of three days. So we did like a one-third cost.
Are you guys a nonprofit group?
Totally nonprofit. So how many other organizations are in this position? Because I'm just trying to think of them.
Yeah, I don't know.
There's lacrosse, there's soccer, and football. Those are the ones, I think, that we've given this time of quarter.
Who would get this?
We do one-third.
Okay, they're all nonprofits?
They're all nonprofits, yeah. Yeah, because I'm just thinking about consistency, it's important to consent, you know, fairness. I mean, if we're doing it for the other three, certainly we should do it here, right?
I know that lacrosse, I'm on that board as well, completely lived through this year because they're, they used to play the sea, and went to other fields because Woodbridge is completely rented from Peace Park. We do not have any service, any charge whatsoever. So you lost a lacrosse league in town because of the thing.
Because of the one-third? So we don't have to, like, just a factor. Like, like I said, we do have somebody else in Chile that's looking for to use that park right now, which we don't rent out. Some of it also is field access to when, who's using what field when, and we only have clearly the two fields that we rent out, so. But I think it's just, whatever you guys decide to do, it's just, what are those, because Diddy's the one that, when people call, it needs to understand, you know, where that line is, or what you offer. What does the town do with the fees that are generated? Does it go into like a...
Because it's factored into the overall revenue for the town for the year, which reduces the tax burden, because it's income from other sources.
So how much does the town get in this question, you know?
For the rentals?
Yeah.
We budget approximately $15,000 for rental.
Is that all?
For, that would be for the pavilion, the airport, and the town hall for the gym. It does not count the lodge, the lodge is separate. So it's approximately $15,000 every budget.
Do you know what the airport alone generates?
Less than $5,000.
I guess no, for the record, if there's enough money, it's going to be whatever.
I just want to say that, like, when I come into town hall and sign checks every week, I'm really disgusted at how much I see as wasted. And so I would be more inclined to say, this is a good use of taxpayer money, than some, a lot of the stuff I see coming through every week with apparently no oversight from anyone. So I just wanted to put that out there.
So the, the good question is, if we really got a major flaw in the sports, do they have significant Bethany resident participation?
I would say if they have Bethany resident participation, if they don't charge a fee for you, like a field usage fee to their athletes, and they're nonprofit. If they're charging their athletes to use the field, then their money shouldn't cost.
I do want to clarify this quickly. The fee that is, the $2 that's charged at the high school is not for the athletes whatsoever, it's only for spectators in order to cover the cost. The fee is incurred by our participants whatsoever. None of our coaches, none of our staff, and none of our players pay any fee whatsoever.
Can you just give a little summary of what the, the, is it the registration fee that the players pay, and what that cost covers?
So I can pull up some of the bills that we've had. Mainly, our insurance is well over $8,000 to make sure that our athletes are protected every time they touch foot on the field, as well as our reconditioning fee. This year was a reconditioning year. We have over 100 pieces of equipment, being all helmets, all shoulder pads, all jerseys, all, you know, the things that you need to keep our players safe. That bill was well over $8,000. So we had $1,600 that we had to come up with immediately, just to get our league initiated, as well as our legal fees of starting a brand-new nonprofit because we transferred out of Pop Warner. We had to generate, essentially create a new business, which meant filing with the state and doing that whole legwork. So we had legal fees of making sure that we were doing it the right way. We had the reconditioning fees, we have the equipment fees, as well as jerseys we had to go and purchase this year, because all of our jerseys were Pop Warner insignia. So we had another $5,000 bill on top of that to get new jerseys made for all of our athletes. So we had essentially a $21,000 bill before we were even able to open up to registration. So.
Do you have any kids who are low-income right now?
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's great for kids that are involved in doing this, and that this is available.
We have these kids over five days a week, including games and our practices. So practices...
Doing their homework.
When do they do their homework? It is a commitment from not only families, but it's a commitment from our coaches, it's a commitment from the board. So we have practice three days a week, they have an hour walk-through on Saturdays, and then they're at games for two hours on Sundays, and this is every week. So we have, tonight, they're doing a pop, like, making sure that the kids all eat together and, you know, get to form, bond, and have a family atmosphere, which is what we're striving to provide for these kids.
So it would be the soccer, the soccer, how great would be the only other group that would be similarly situated?
Soccer, you mentioned, and lacrosse, most of that, of it.
There's two, I believe, there's probably three, guys. So there's indoor soccer and outdoor soccer. So outdoor soccer, that was used for the airport, and then we'll have the indoor soccer for the... And we've had, like, indoor, like, baseball, T-ball, where we're not doing that anymore. There have been some other kind of leagues that have come out and asked for different areas, so. But right now, it would just be the two.
The soccer.
Well, Warren's here for you guys for later, which just came in today, but it was not a real date.
I mean, I think as a town, we're in big trouble, certainly in the coming months, and certainly probably by next year. But I don't, I don't really, I don't think that this could be, this is... I mean, I just think it's positive all around to have kids have access to this. And I think kids do well in other areas of their lives when they have something that they think that challenges them in a lot of ways. And I think it's a good, a good thing that we, that we have this available for children.
The town, if we should waive the field use fee for the 2025 football season, and then how can we look at it again next year?
So the 2025 season is, starts now?
It started off with first.
Okay, August 1st, okay. I wanted to, this season end?
So this league does their own higher competition, which ends around Thanksgiving time. So it's just a local competition where the highest seeded teams play against each other. If we reach it to that point, then it will be around Thanksgiving that we wrap up. Fingers crossed, it's a much more competitive league than we were playing against.
Oh.
Do you want to go on and make a motion for this one, or for the field use in general? So you want to come back to other organizations, to this circuit here? Like if they're nonprofit, any residents?
Significant, definitely not, thank you.
Right. No charge for field use to the athletes.
I think we just do it for one year.
Right, for one year, but it would cover any other organization that falls within this range.
And we're just talking about the airport, yeah.
And for the financial assistance component, if you want to put that.
Can we just repeat the last, that is what we just said?
The financial assistance component.
Oh, right, right, yeah.
Oh, right, right, yeah. Is the related matter on the agenda, or is it in the other? It, it came in this morning. This is the one for indoor soccer. Oh, nice, so. That one, it would have to end earlier.
I move we establish policy for this year for the airport field use, uh, fee waiver for organizations that are nonprofit, have significant numbers of Bethany children participating, uh, don't charge a field use fee to their participants, and, uh, offer financially for low-income families.
I second that.
One favor.
Unless, do you want to, um, define significant, or do you want to leave it kind of loose?
Loose.
Intentionally? Because I just want to.
You want to put in a particular percentage? A third or more?
Would that cover you if we, if we'd said a third or more, um, of the players are, that should be Bethany residents to get the waiver? Oh, I'm sorry. That would already, um, yeah, I have more than, okay, yeah, I think that's, yeah. So same motion with.
Define it, you guys say.
I second that.
One favor?
Aye.
And actually, we have to discuss on the possible options for long-term rental policies for the gym, center station, airport, and veterans department.
Sam?
There are some representatives of the church here, so you're aware, if you have any questions.
Is that my cue? Sorry, was it, wasn't sure, that was, uh, last one. Uh, hi, everyone. My name's Tom Green. I'm one of the members of Stillwater Community Church. Um, I have with me Sam Talbot, who is a pastor in our church, Galen Johnson and Jesse Culver, who are also members. Uh, Galen Johnson and her husband have been the point of contact for a lot of communications between the town and our newly formed, uh, church. Uh, we are a small group, predominantly Bethany resident, residents, estimating probably between sixty and seventy percent. Uh, we formed out of a, another church down in Woodbridge, and we are currently using the gym as a space that we use on Sunday mornings for worship. Uh, we've been, uh, lease renting the space on a week-to-week basis, more or less uh, from the town, uh, with intentions unlikely going forward with asking for a long-term rental. Uh, I'm also on our current location committee, uh, and so far, the town gymnasium has provided ample space for us to worship, and they've been kind enough to allow us to use it for that block of time. Uh, we're here to answer any questions that you have. Our pastor Sam's happy to, uh, speak to anything on that, as well as Galen and Jesse, if you should have any questions directed towards us, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may or may not ask.
When you said for longer-term rental, what, what did you have in mind?
So we're not, we're, we wanted to talk to the town about that. Uh, if, we're looking at most likely, uh, year-to-year rental agreement. We can do longer if that is what the town is interested in. Uh, of course, we'd have to bring that back to our congregation, uh, for them to approve, uh, anything. Uh, our fiscal year ends with the calendar year, so we're trying to, uh, work with the town to at least stay through the end of this year uh, with hopes of, uh, with our new fiscal year maintaining that rental for the calendar twenty-six year.
Do you have any, um, question? Is anyone looking for alternative locations?
Yes, I, I, I am, I sit as chair for the committee looking for alternative locations. Uh, we're looking across Bethany, Woodbridge, Prospect, uh, really trying to stay local to this area, as this is where the majority of our, of our congregation, uh, come from. Uh, we have a few sites that we are currently looking and discussing as a group. A couple are more promising than others. Um, but given the constraints of a very, very, very young church, uh, we are financially kind of a little bit tight on some things, so we're trying to do what's most fiscally responsible, but also, uh, what we can work with, with, what's presented of course.
So you would say, like, your five to ten-year goal wouldn't be to still be here?
No.
Okay.
Um, if I could chime in?
Yeah.
Not at the town hall, no.
Right, right.
Potentially taking a residence in Bethany.
I just didn't know if that was your goal, that you'd stay here.
We would like to move out of the town hall as soon as possible. Uh, we, we, ideally, we're looking for a space that has some subunits that we can do Sunday school lessons, we can do small groups, that our church staff can be able to occupy on a week basis where they can just come in for a day, and they're able to do their own work, you know, free from the confines of their own homes, um, being able to take office hours for congregants or people from the community, uh, to be of service to them. Uh, our ultimate goal is to be of direct, uh, assistance and service to the Bethany community as it stands right now. Uh, we have not formally launched as a, you know, official church, like, public, you know, um, public-facing. We're still kind of in that modular phase of trying to establish things, like a statement of faith, and our bylaws and all of that, which we have committees working on actively. Uh, and then once all of that is finalized, which we're looking at probably within the next two months, three months, um, all of that to be finalized and, and approved by our congregation, uh, to be able to have a formal launch where we put our name out to the community and officially say we are here, there, wherever, uh, with the hope of being able to be of service to the community, um, providing everything from children's ministries and services uh, to counseling services and just general community welfare.
If I could also chime in?
Please.
We, Tom's right, we have not officially launched as a church, meaning we haven't, you know, we're not opening up, uh, promoting online and so on and so forth. Um, but we have, uh, a part of our mission is to, um, assist the local community, uh, to, you know, kind of help with um, social cohesion, unity, uh, foster values of service, volunteerism. Um, we've already partnered with the local school district for a clothing brand. Um, and we are actively kind of looking for opportunities to support the community in that way. So while we haven't launched yet, that is not going to be prohibiting for us in any way from, um, you know, kind of contributing to the community that we're a part of. Um, so that's kind of our intent is to, um, since we are already made up of mostly Bethany residents, um, we have deep connections with BCS, with, uh, the Amity School District, with, uh, the community as a whole, um, the, the state troopers here in the, in the community, um, and so our intent is to continue to be integrated um, into, into the lifeblood of the community, um, and to be of service to the community as well. So I also would like to say, uh, just a huge thanks to the, the board for seeing us tonight, and, uh, the staff at the town hall. You guys have been so kind. Um, so thank you so much for making our time here lovely so far.
Very welcome.
That's good to hear.
It's been very easy to communicate and work with.
Yeah.
You have worked with Bob.
In fact, we have.
Jesse has.
As well as Jennifer, thank you for all your help.
Love it.
Enjoy, yeah.
It's been very nice. Um, you know, we try and leave the building as clean as we can. We leave, we have a lot of little kids. Um, but the space has been working out really well for us and our community, so.
I will say you're the only group that leaves in on Monday. We had no idea you were here.
That's great to hear.
I will say that for sure.
We've got any, if it's helpful to know on a week-to-week basis, I mean, it's been summer, so it's a little bit hard to get numbers, but we've had about, you know, forty to fifty people each week. Um, and that includes or doesn't include kids?
That includes kids.
Includes kids.
Yeah.
We know that based on our, uh, communications with our, our, uh, congregants, that we will have, um, easily fifteen to twenty more people regularly as the fall kind of, you know, the normalcy of fall gets kicked off. Um, but yeah, we, uh, we've thoroughly, it's been a huge blessing to be able to use this space. It's centrally located for most of our, our members, so.
I have to say, I was a little bit alarmed when I saw the, um, the piece of paper that was signed, because usually agreements would be more uh, robust than just like a piece of paper that says, here you go, you know?
Sure.
So I was a little, a little bit alarmed that there's a lot missing there in that piece of paper. Like the town rental agreement? Yeah, yeah. It's just so, like, there's nothing there, you know? Um, I think having more of an agreement would benefit you as well as the town.
Absolutely, yeah. That's why we're here, really, is we just want to, um, you know, present that and also to say that, you know, whatever the town, uh, needs, uh, you know, again, part of our mission is to, is to serve this community, so uh, in no way do we aim to take advantage of the town at all.
As it stands right now, from the location committee end of things, our primary, uh, place of residence that we're looking at for the year twenty-six is the Bethany Town Hall. Uh, sorry, the town gym provided that the town is okay with that and is willing to agree to that. Uh, we're happy to enter more robust agreements, uh, should that time come. Uh, we're more than willing to do what we have to do for our part, um, to ma- maintain that relationship. We understand, um, it's been, it was brought to our attention that there are some longstanding agreements with other groups that use that space on Sunday mornings, and we're happy to accommodate and be flexible within that, understanding that many of those agreements, I, I was told the, um,
Election time.
Around the election time that the gym gets used, so we, you know, we, we don't want to interfere with anything that's been longstanding in the community as well, considering that we're the real folks in town. Uh, we are more than happy to work around that, either move our services elsewhere for those times, or perform, you know, do it then later in the day if that's, uh, not a loss to everyone.
No, if that kind of works for the elections, it's, you know.
Totally fine. We'll work around it. As long as, as long as we know, we're happy to make that.
Get it, get it here for a couple weeks, and instead of promoting the public breakfast, we've got after him, three clothes, and, uh, children.
Totally fine. We can work around that.
Public breakfast, usually, yeah, they're like, twelve o'clock.
Yeah, so to Tom's point, if, you know, if this weekend's kind of long and it's just not going to work for the day at all for us to be here, we'll, we'll flex around that.
Really, someone bless the breakfast and.
We'd be happy to. We'd be happy to.
Happy to be a part of it, you know, whatever, whatever works, you know, we, we, as, as a young church that's very, uh, small, we have a lot of flexibility with our, our current arrangements. Um, we bring all, almost all of our own equipment, so it's not a matter of, you know, meetings, you know, equipment that's currently in use, we can, we can make things work.
We're not trying to overcomplicate who we are, what we are.
No.
Um, our main goals are to grow together in our faith, to grow in community, um, and to, and to support, uh, this community by, you know, hopefully, hopefully fostering, um, good things like volunteerism and service, um, and so, um, however we can be of, of help in that, um, to the town, we, we would love to, so.
Any other questions for us as a group?
Sophie, one can I ask a question?
Just all their theories that I presented.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so currently, right now, I know you said you had a fifty-plus members that come on Sunday. Um, right now, we don't have any town staff that's here while you guys are here.
Correct.
So, so that's just, that's part of the conversation here, so I was just going, you don't, I'm, I'm making the assumption, you guys don't have any security or anything that comes with your monitors, in case somebody, you know, is, is here that's not with your church, or anything like that?
We actually do.
You do, okay. That's good to know.
Yeah, so in our, in our congregation, we have a state trooper, um, and additional people who are, uh, well-versed, uh, in, in the area of security, especially specifically troop security. Um, and so we've got, we've pretty well got that covered.
And we're insured.
They were insured, totally.
Yeah, I was just going, because that was one of our, that was one of our conversations, where we're just kind of like, if you guys are growing, originally, it was like twenty people, and then it became like fifty people, and we're like, ooh, well, we don't have anyone here, so now we're going to staff it. Um, so I think that's one of the things that's.
Yeah, our intention is to be fully self-sufficient while we're here. Uh, everything from setup to take-down, cleanup, and security, and kind of everything that falls in between that. As you said, we'd like to make sure that when Monday comes around, you did know we were here. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
I don't, I mean, I don't have a problem with them using it as long as it's not being used by another organization. I just don't want to say we're going to tie it up and lock people out.
I'm, I'm not sure what you mean.
Well, um, well, like you mentioned, the, the R T C breakfast, I'm not sure, but also the boys' scouts into the gym. I'm not sure when, what was that?
There's like the spaghetti supper, I think they set the date for, for kids' graduations, do they do the holiday, depending upon when that falls, there's kind of a gym.
Yeah, I think it's, I, I don't think a long-term, year, year, half, maybe, hopefully, um, I think, do look three, four weeks out, if nobody's using it, it's everybody. But, I mean, it's, it's for everybody. You guys are, you know, people too, so if nobody's using it, that's fine, but I, I, we can't, I don't think you can just tie it up and the next people come on. You can't use it, we can find another place, and if we're doing at least that way, we have to be asking the youth for permission to use the town hall. So I, I think as a short term, until you find something better, which it sounds like you want to do anyway. Um, yeah, town halls, church, although it's better than nowhere, right?
It is, yeah. I see.
Yeah, I would keep it in the shorter term.
I don't know, I'm just thinking about, um, what would happen if a different faith group came to us and stuff.
You have to, you have to give them equal.
Well, that, that's what I'm asking, like, what, what do we, I mean, I don't know if it's likely to happen or not, I'm just trying to think of.
Probably not, but you can't say you like these guys better. Then you have to be like, no, you guys are just the ones.
Yeah, no.
For the past, um, few months, I've been working with Vinnie to do month by month. It was actually.
You're just, you're just saying good, Vinnie. Yeah, that would look, I mean, that would look, it, nobody else asks for this space, so, yeah, perfectly fine to reserve it.
I, I think that would meet our needs very well, um, as long as the council is, is amenable to that, uh, we're, we're happy to continue forward in that way. Um, and also can't reiterate enough, we're, we want to, we, we don't want to cause waves with what's already kind of the norm here for the space usage, so when those things come up, we are.
Just play it to work out, then you'll be, you'll go to reserve, and oh, sorry, they have an election coming up, you're.
Right.
Yeah, that works great.
That's great.
Do any other groups, other than the, the events that we all know of, are there other groups that are renting space here when there's no staff, like, kind of like that one? Just wondering. They're under parking rent. So normally, we haven't done it in a while, but if they're on like a Sunday, they're, they're, I, like, because they're, um, under the perk, you will park in recreation, so somebody in the recreation, recreation should have been here, um, as a staff member for those. So this is, this is why this came up. This is one of the only ones that didn't have any, have staff here, and normally, there's custodians too. So they're doing all their own work, so normally, we had a custodian here that was doing the setup and cleanup, so they would stick around. We don't have that for this instance either, because you guys are great, you know, putting the chairs away and doing all the things, so you don't need to have that fee. Um, so, but normally, it's parking rent.
And then typically, I'll, I'll either come in, open the door in the morning, lock it up, and they have to build it, or I'll do it when we open it.
Yeah, that's some pretty neat technology. I'm blown away every time I reach for the door at eight AM, and it's just open up straight. Pretty great.
Maybe else?
No.
So do you think if you, if we did a short, a shorter term, kind of, kind of going the wrong way we have, that the current paper work is sufficient?
It's what we do with everybody else.
Like who?
Anybody who uses the gym.
Or.
For a short day, you just. Or if it's a short day, you just, yeah, you just pay. I don't know if there's any, I don't know if there's a, it says page one or two, but it didn't copy, so I don't know if there's some funny parts on it or not.
And, and this is the only form we have for all facilities, correct?
But because it was temporary, there was no, like, agreement made, because originally it was, I believe Vinnie did it, but I believe it was for five weeks, something like that, and then it kind of expanded a little bit longer and a little bit longer. And so, no, they have never had an agreement. This was just an event, it was a regular event that they had their COI and they paid their two hundred dollars and that's why we're here.
And we do have different forms for it, because it's...
We do.
Specific forms, you know, specific form for here, for now, you know?
But it says page one or two, is there another page that has conditions or...
Yeah, terms and conditions, yeah. The top of it says one or two.
Do we get fully listed?
Mm-hmm. The, the one that has the terms and conditions is one for the airport, because that's where we have problems. There is a second page that says you can clean up after yourself.
Okay. That's the only addition.
Can we look at the tightening up the...
Yeah, I'll take a look.
Yeah, please, please let us know if there's something to ensure.
It should always stay.
Yeah, that's all, and that, that form is, is a piece of all the rest, so they have to produce a COI, they have that, and then they have to obviously pay the fee before they, they come on, including any kind of custodial fee.
Can you say this is the second page, Jim?
Hmm? Also, do you need the entire length of this, with all of them? Because they're all a little different.
And since this topic covers all the locations as well, I'm assuming we want to be the same for the lodge and center states and so on, what I'm interested in.
Long-term.
Long-term leases, right? Yeah, we're talking about the gym.
So there is one other point on the bottom of that page that says other considerations?
Okay.
They have inquired if that two hundred dollar weekly rental can be discounted per month. The standard rental rate for the gym is two fifty, but that includes the custodial fee, which is why they are currently paying the two hundred, because we are not, they are responsible for cleaning up after themselves. So we waived that portion, but they are, that they have inquired if that rate could be lowered even more. So that is a topic that the three of you will need to address as well.
The, the discount was more if there was a long-term agreement. If, if we're going to do it month by month and we're perfectly happy, that thing must currently be the current cost.
Then I can still lay you in from the hot tub or whatever. If we have to, if we have to pay somebody to come over and unlock the door and lock it.
Sure.
So what's this current status of the agreement? Is it old, is it, is it, is it in effect right now, or is it...
I submitted a form for the month of September, but I haven't paid for the month of September pending this meeting. But I would, you know, granted, it's okay that we use it for the Sundays in September, I would, I would go pay for all the Sundays at once to be set for the month, or whatever Sundays are approved that month, rather.
So, and we keep going, we're going, Vinnie to work on the, the tighter agreement?
Yeah, I think for these even day rentals, we should see what the terminology is, and we have a condition in one that should be all of them. Do we make consistent...
Does anyone know when the last time this form was updated?
That form was updated, so the context of that is it used to fall underneath parking rec until last year, and then we took it over, you know, and then I revamped what she had, and then there was a selectmen meeting that changed the rates. There was a discussion about adding new procedures, but I'm pretty sure it got tabled. And so these have been our pre-existing forms that we've been using for a while.
That's amazing.
Yeah. You know, like I said, the only one you'll see that's been updated a lot is the airport, because we added a bunch of liability waivers because of the sports. That's the only one that ever got updated.
I mean, I'm trying to think about addressing the form, which I think is high adequate, but then also thinking about their scheduling, you know? I don't know. I don't know, Ben, do you have, what's your schedule?
My schedule?
Yeah, for, for your timeframe for looking at the, as a form, maybe you'll...
Well, I mean, do you want it by the next week? Do you want it, when do you want? You know, I mean, I have things, I'm out of town for the rest of this week, and then on Thursday for my family that I part, but this shouldn't take terribly long. I may probably get something back to you about June or April. We're on the plane next week.
Really?
Yes. She was here. Yes, so...
You know, I don't want to commit to anything if Ben's going to be looking at this, at this stuff, but I, I do think this one's not adequate.
You've been operating, right?
And, and like I said, I was alarmed when I saw it.
Well, you could continue it for another month, and then revisit this next month with an updated form.
Yeah, with an updated form. Going forward, we use that.
Exactly. Just continue it for one more month under the standard operating procedure and follow it, and then you can have updated claims for your viewing consideration. Yeah, October. I can email something around so we can discuss it one-on-one, if you'd like in advance with me. So I can get your input in advance with me, so we'll have, right? And then we can discuss it in public session at the next week.
Oh, you didn't mention it.
Well, I do, one-on-one. I don't, we don't do it as...
You can send us, you know, some evaluation, but do it your way. I think having an advance would be helpful. Thank you.
Any else on this? Okay, let's see, next, we'll discuss on a possible action or housing advice with the committee.
Thank you, want to get around to this? Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ten months ago, you folks authorized and pointed the quick vision of the Housing and Parks Committee. We started meeting in March, so I thought this would be a quick update on what we've been doing. So that's objective number one, objective number two, so talk to you a little bit about how we could potentially further discussion listing and other parties about housing issues in the town. So we started meeting in March. We have a Vip person committee, Leslie Higgins-Bill, Mayberry, Lauren Sardi, Kim Britton, and myself. And, all right, it's an excellent group, great expertise, and since we've been meeting, we've adopted a charter, which maybe we'll have copies for you. And then we've really been trying to get a handle on how we want to tackle this issue, huge issue, because it's not something that's going to be solved or addressed in a couple of meetings. And the first things we did was a review of the existing regulations for planning zoning, with a focus on districts that have already been created in our, already in our regulations. Those would be the elderly housing district, the housing opportunity development district, and the attainable housing overlay zone. So these are components, and essentially what it is, it gives planning zoning the opportunity that they want to designate a particular area for elderly housing. They can use that designation and then they can engage with potential developers in terms of trying to develop that kind of a community. We've been reviewing town maps, understand where these districts and zones might fit, if, if there is any. We've been going through, we do have approval, and we've been going through discussion with GIS about getting a map of the town, with a focus on looking at town owned, state owned, and exempt properties that might be considered for this sort of a zone identification. We've been discussing things, where things stand with Rocky Corner, something I want to talk about a little bit more. But we have twenty-two units that are built and pretty close to ready to occupy except, and there is a big except in there. We have been reducing, reviewing housing development activities in other parts of the state regarding funding and development strategies. And to this, we have one member of our committee who is very well informed, Lesley Higgins-Bill actually has worked with some of these groups, so she has direct experience. And so we're learning about that. One of the biggest issues is financing, and for developers, it's land acquisition costs, it's financing the overall project. So we want to look at different ways in which we might be able to find creative ways to help with, with the financing. And again, this is all through private, nonprofit. This is not anything to do with the town investing or new nails like that. We've been monitoring the state level activity, particularly, I don't know if you're familiar with HB 5002, five zero zero two. It's something that was passed in the state legislature this past session. The governor ultimately vetoed it in June. It is quite controversial. It is an attempt to really kickstart the development of affordable housing at the town level, but there are a lot of issues, concerns with it regarding the formulas they use to create fair share, what kind of obligations towns would be on the, on the hook for. This is going to be revisited this fall. So it is something that is probably in your best interest, then, I don't know if it's an honor to change it all, but towns need to understand what's going on and what power be taken out of their hands and what power be given to them. So stay tuned. And then we're setting up meetings with at least, hopefully, a couple of developers. We just want to understand from a developer's point of view, what are they looking for in terms of the potential development opportunity? And again, we're talking about Bethany, we're not talking about how to come in and do a hundred, two hundred unit development. What we are talking about is the potential, you know, what is the minimum? Would they consider anything under four units? Could it be up to six or eight? And what kind of requirements, what would make it attractive for developers? Because we can, we can go through all these wonderful machinations. If it's not of interest to a developer in the market out there, then it's not going to go in for it. Our hope is that we'll have our first round of recommendations that we can provide to planning zoning. And again, we're an advisory committee, we're not authorized to act on anything. Our job is really to do the nitty-gritty work, to be able to gather this much information to provide to you, to plan zoning, to consider. But this is a very critical issue because it's a hot button. It's at the state level, it's at the national level, there's a lot of pressure to have, to have housing addressed, and if we don't do anything at a town level, it's going to be dictated to us at a different level. So I don't know, Hiram, Hiram's our town planner, he is sitting as an advisor on the committee. I don't know if you have any additional comments about that?
No, I think that you've done a really good job of explaining it. 5002 was a controversial bill, and I think it will be back at some point this fall, exactly how it's going to get worked out and the items that came up, primarily from Rupert Fairfield County, to modify that bill. But I do think it'll be back, and I think we're all watching carefully to make sure that whatever does get approved and what the impact, potential impact might be on a town like Bethany. I would just like to say this, that I have experience with a lot of towns in the state of Connecticut, and it's really important for me to give this group information about other towns like Bethany. We're not talking about Norwalk, we're not talking about Bridgeport, we're talking about things that, that might be happening in Upper Bushfield County, for example, where the, the density is, is a certain way, the design is a certain way. So all those things have been taken care of, and I think Alex has done a great job cheering that group and look forward to helping them in the future.
Well, we hope, we hope. So before I hop onto the second point of discussion, any questions about what we're doing, what the housing advisory committee is all about, or why this is an important issue that towns be concerned?
No, I think you were going to say when you were going to do your first round of recommendations, but I don't think, I think you moved on without saying that you expect to have a sooner recommendation to get, you said the first round.
Hopefully, I mean, again, this is a voluntary group, and just a quick, I think I shared this with you before, almost five years ago, we formed a, a similar group. We've been given a state grant. Every town's required to develop an affordable housing plan to include in the plan of conservation and development, is a regulatory requirement now. So we had an opportunity with a, the grant to, in this case, retain the services of Hiram and help us develop an affordable housing plan. So that's in the POCD right now. It is sort of the first effort on that, but when we did it, we were literally under a three-month timeline crunch. So we were doing a force march. We, we had everybody meeting every two weeks, we had a lot of meat on the bone that we had to work through. This group, four out of the five members, were on that group, so that's great, and we had the experience and knowledge. But I was very mindful, I was not going to put them through a force march again. And so we meet monthly. If there's appetite, we'll meet more frequently, if we have substance. So when I say I hope that our first recommendations will be by the end of this fall, that's the hope. And I think we're getting it. I mean, if you go through this process about creating groups and committees, the storming, norming, forming tight dynamics, I think we've gotten through the first couple steps at that point, and I would think there's real appetite for it. So that is my hope. Any other questions?
Are we still at zero for affordable housing availability in Bethany? Are close to zero right now?
We are. The last number I saw was seven tenths of a percent for housing stuff. So that's a little bit misleading from the point of view that all of the units that are down in the trade board book are not included. that are down in the trailer park are not included in that council. And they're not included because one of the requirements to be considered affordable housing using the criteria, it either has to be publicly funded or it has to be deed restricted for a 40-year period. The land that those trailer homes are on are owned privately. They're not deed restricted to subject to whatever sort of increase landlord wants to charge on a yearly basis in terms of renting that lot. So that's, they do not qualify. But in the ordinary use of the word affordable, they would. So here's one exact one. Affordable housing has become another one of these third rails that people have close to advantages of. Nobody will dispute the fact that housing has gotten crazy in terms of cost, the availability. Everybody wants to see the ability for their kids to be able to buy a house, move someplace, raise a family. So I don't look at trying to meet the legal definition of affordable. I'm looking at it personally for more of the organically affordable, meaning if it's smaller units, trailer park homes, or instead of a 3,000 square foot house on two acres, maybe it's two, three, four, 1,800 square foot housing units on two acres. I don't know. But that's the kind of stuff that we're going to try to investigate. But my belief for the good of the town is that we really have to look at creating this organically affordable housing. Because the way I'm looking at this right now is that since COVID, we have a completely stuck housing market in this town. We're not different from most towns. It is moving, it's not turning over because people that have owned homes here either have very affordable mortgages and cannot get an affordable mortgage, or there's not housing stock. So we have a huge number of people that have grown up in Bethany, that their house and their property has outgrown them. They cannot maintain it, they don't want to maintain it. They want to stay in town, but there's no place to move to. So they sit there, and because they sit there, younger people that want to come into town can't find anything because there's nothing, so the market's stuck. If we can create, and I'm using this again hypothetically, if you can create smaller, more affordable units that seniors who want to stay in town could move to, would sell their house, that would create some inventory that would bring in new people. Likewise, if we could have smaller, more affordable homes for young families that want to come into town, if they could come into town, that could be their starter home. And then as these bigger homes open up because the senior people move into rental housing, now we have a moving housing cycle. We don't have that. And again, we're not unique. This is not a Bethany problem. This is a statewide problem, probably more of a national problem. So we have to figure out how to get it unstuck. So back to your point, I'm not interested in meeting, going from seven tenths of a percent to 10%, which is where you have to get to for to get affordable housing apart. I'm just trying to figure out how can we, as a town, create a better variety of housing stock that feeds the front end and the back end of this thing? And if we do that, then we get better movement through.
I don't remember how I got invited to go on an affordable housing tour, but I did. I was on the bus with a bunch of people, I think.
Was it probably through SCROG?
I think it was.
Yeah.
Is that sounds familiar?
Yeah.
And it was interesting because the units that we saw were absolutely beautiful. And I think that they're, I'm just curious if you guys have any plans to do anything around sort of the stigma, right? Like a lot of people, and I think people in Bethany might say, we don't want that here.
Right.
And I've actually heard some people say that out loud, people actually who should know better. And I think it's really important in terms of like an education piece because these units were absolutely beautiful.
I'm going to say they are gorgeous.
And I did take that opportunity when I was on that tour to talk to a couple of developers who were really proud of what they had done and wanted to kind of show off. And I asked them, I said, you know, why is this here in Milford or whatever? Why not a town like Bethany? And he said, I couldn't do it right now because of the septic and the wells and that cost alone. And he gave me a bunch of numbers off topic, what that would cost. And that's like a major roadblock, right?
It is, and that's one of the reasons we want to talk to developers. We're not going to have the infrastructure anytime soon. Maybe 10 years, 20 years down the road, we might, but we don't have it. So from a developer, when they look at it, they're going to say, if I can't get at least X number of units on that lot, it's just not worth it. I got so many better opportunities to go to sell. So that's part of what we have to understand. But I don't know if you saw, have you seen one in Orange? I don't think it was on that tour.
I don't think I have.
So right down, if you take Racebrook into Lawson Coaster, right before you get there, right after Orange Falls Golf Course, just off to the left, there's a couple little streets go in. Hiram, do you remember how many units from that?
Something like that, yeah. Because we're on a car away to there.
They're gorgeous. They're all rentals, and a third of them are affordable. I think they're all, 100% are affordable. There's two different levels of affordable. 100% like that. There's a regular, affordable, and a third making it super affordable. Yeah, well, I mean, again, affordable is 80% of your area median income. 60%. And you can't see more than 30% of your available income going towards housing. And so that's where you didn't know the technical details. But actually, I've had a chance to talk once with a woman who led the development of that. She lives in Orange. She is one of the people, Carol Martin, that I hope we can talk to and find out.
She's the one who just did that.
Yeah, yeah. It was just fantastic. She spoke at a conference that I was at. So yeah, it's a big, big deal. And from my perspective, it's not only the right thing for us as a town to be thinking about, but if we don't do it, Hartford or Washington is going to say, here's how you're going to do it. Chris Evans, sewer, water, gas, a little block from the bus line, a little different. Well, here's the crazy thing, as I understand it, Hiram, you told me if I'm interpreting correctly, one of the ways they're going to incent towns to meet their fair share under this HB 5002, if you do not meet that threshold, or you don't have a concrete plan for it, they will not fund you for infrastructure development, which becomes, okay. So we can't get there, and you're not willing to give us the money, but you want us to do it. So that's one of the critical issues that they're going to have to work out.
I wonder if our grants committee could look at some grants to this, you know, like, are there anything out there that would address, you know, some of the lost profit for developers they have to put in these systems here?
So that becomes my second part that I want to talk about.
Okay.
For this side one. So I'm also planning zoning. I serve as vice chair of planning zoning until November. I am not running for reelection again. I focus on this housing issue, and I'm hoping I can be more of a valuable resource to planning zoning, to focus on this as opposed to being a member. That, I did reach out, so I'm also there at the town representative to SCROG, regional plan. The individual headed up regional planning for SCROG, I think, about a year ago, Ben Lund, Lovejoy, left to go to the state and working for Department of Housing. And he was providing technical assistance to towns to help look at opportunities to promote housing development. I tried, I reached out to him because I knew him, and I said, I'd love to talk to you about that. And he said, okay. Are you formally authorized and designated by your town governing body to be that representative? And I said, no. But planning zoning is a one way. You have to, I can't engage with you until I know you're authorized. So that's one of the stumbling blocks that I hit. And that's just to have the conversation. The second issue as it relates to that would be to tap into the state on not only technical assistance, potentially of grants and other opportunities if they're trying to promote development. And one area in particular is we have abandoned state police barracks upon 63 that I presume the state owns. And I'd love to be able to start a dialogue with the state to say, hey, do you know you've got a three and a half, four acre parcel that's sitting there doing nothing? And if you're so hot to trot, and town's really getting on board, can you help us? Now, again, I don't know if this is true or not true, but I've heard potentially there are going to be remediation issues up there. I don't know if that's soil. I know asbestos will be an issue. But again, if there's state funds for cleanup and the state is really trying to promote housing development, what better way to go to the state to say, we can help you figure out how to put that four acres to better use? So again, I'm not asking for anything to act on behalf of the town. I just want to serve as a conduit so that I can have discussions and be able to bring back the hearing to planning zoning about what opportunities might exist out there. So that's at the state level. Coming back to Rocky Corner, there's all sorts of wonderful speculation about Rocky Corner. It's on the market again. Lots of concern about why it hasn't sold, and there are water issues. I've heard a lot of different things. I haven't heard anybody's talked directly to anyone who's been involved in actually what's going on with the property. So part of what I would hope I could also do is serve as an authorized representative for the state to be able to talk to Ion Bank, what's going on? And if they know there are groundwater issues there, they would be, I believe, they'd be obligated to, if they're asked, is what we know. So rather than have this speculation of what's going on and what are the problems, let's find out about it. If there truly are water quality issues that need remediation, they're probably on the hook for a huge, huge cost. And where the developer that they want to sell it to is going to take that into consideration in terms of the price of the property. So I'd like to find out what's going on with that. I'd also like to find out if it's absolutely crazy to figure out if the town can partner with Ion Bank to try to figure out how to make that property usable and give Ion Bank every opportunity to get tremendous publicity out of what they're doing for the wonderful community. So again, it just starts with being able to have a conversation. So that's the other second, that's the second part of my discussion with you is for you to consider whether it's me or someone else, but to appoint somebody who can serve as an authorized representative for the town to be able to have these kinds of discussions. I don't want to be talking in the state, I don't think the town should get involved around the corner. But I mean, you're a free person, you can talk to whoever you want. I'm not saying that we, but what I envision, again, if there are truly water issues or mediation, this is not a town issue, it's a state issue. Why are we getting about, why are we inserting ourselves?
Because we, you said, you talked about partnering with Ion Bank.
No, 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 no.
Partner with anybody.
I'm not, I'm not.
Real estate deal.
I'm talking about how to get it unstuck.
Why?
Because you got, no, but as an individual plan, but why are you trying, why are you trying to involve the town? I'm trying to figure out how the town can benefit by actually utilizing the 22 units that have been built. That's, that's my goal. Okay. Well, if you want information to talk to Mr. Lovejoy at the State Housing Department, I'm fine with that. I don't know why you need a motion on that.
Because you have to be authorized, right? Is that why?
Yeah, I don't, do you know what the process is? Do I need to show a certificate or something? No, don't tell them that you're authorized to talk. It's just that they don't want to talk to 5,000 people in the town. They just want to, you're chairing the housing community, right? I'm sorry? You're the chair of the housing community. So I don't know why he wouldn't, I understand you can't just talk to everybody you call, but I don't know why that wouldn't have been enough. So I'm trying to talk to DOT. What kind of motion do you want to make for that? Authorized to speak to the State Housing Department?
I think that would be wonderful to find out.
Chair of the housing community, what was the chair of the housing?
What's the guy's name again?
Ben Lovejoy. I think he's still there.
That's the Department of Housing, right?
Department of Housing. And he was hired as a technical resource consultant that is available to towns.
I mean, I think the motion should say Department of Housing staff, and just in case he quits tomorrow, then we have to do this all over again.
Well, it's not just the Department of Housing. Again, if we want to try to find out more about the state police barracks up there, who knows where they're going to send you? It could be, you have to go to the Department of Industry and Services, they own those properties, and you're going to have to. I'm just trying to find out what's the status of the property? What do you know about the property? And if the state is truly interested, put your money where your mouth is, let us utilize that land to do something with it. And I don't know where that journey will take the discussion.
That makes sense. I mean, so the, I'm just trying to think of what a motion could look like. I just want to say for the record that I appreciate what you've done, really do. And I, I think that you're really like confronting these serious questions, not only that could benefit the town, but could prevent like, you know, litigation against the town for not being, you know, where we might maybe should be with housing. You're benefiting future families or young people or older people who want more options in town. So I really appreciate what you've done. And not only that, with concrete options for people here, I was very, very impressed with those, the affordable housing units I saw, and I would support more of that for, you know, greater options in terms of, you know, financial options and what it costs to live here. I would welcome that in a second. So I appreciate that. You've put in so much work into this. I'm sure it was a lot of time and energy and, you know, I want to give you the motion to talk to whoever you have to talk to to find out about the issues that you described. I guess except for Rocky Corner, we could just do one thing at a time and see how it goes.
Yeah, you can do one thing at a time, but I really do think that at some point, this is the town's backyard. There's all speculation as to who the bank's talking to, what they're going to do. I just think it's in the town's best interest, pick up the, look in the temple a little bit to say, what's really going on with that property? And understanding, if they have had it tested and they know there's an issue, we should know that.
Why?
Why not? If the town's not getting involved and someone pushed back on that. If there's a buyer, and that buyer's coming before planning zoning, they want a full disclosure, and we want to understand what we're dealing with, rather than relying on, do we ask the right questions, did it tell us everything we need to know? I don't know. I don't think it hurts to know. This is no way binding the town to do anything.
Right, gathering information, right?
It's gathering information. It's our backyard. I don't know what RWA knows, I don't know if anybody's talked about that. But I would presume that it presume that they should know something. They are the most immediate adjacent neighbor to that property. So I, I mean, whatever you deem appropriate, but respectfully, I think we have every interest as a town in understanding what's going on with that property and what issues may or may not exist with it.
I mean, I don't take that information from others, I think potentially good enough just to know what we're dealing with. I don't, I don't see any downside to that.
Cause as long as it's clear that you just asked them, the town is not gonna have anything involved with it. No, 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 I, I mean, the, the only thing I could see, again, I'm sort of looking worst case scenario, there's something bad going on with the water there. It needs to be remediated or whatever. Get the bank involved with the state. If we're talking to the state and they go, by the way, we have another real parcel of land that you could help out and work for design to get this remediated, we've got twenty-two units ready to come online. That, that's kind of where I'm coming from. I just stay away from Rocky Corner. I don't really think about it, but I think they're looking, somebody's gonna be looking for an angel investor and help the town. I'm, I'm, I would never, never propose that town doesn't get involved financially with Rocky Corner. I just think it is in our best interest to understand what potential is on the property. Really, because whatever developers are looking into, you may find your business. Yeah, I mean, I assume whatever developer would be doing, they'd be diligent on it. Again, I, I hear from various people that know my role on P and Z, some sort of looking to them. I hear they might want to move in, they want to do that, but I'm sure we're, I don't know. It just happens to land all over the place, you know? Don't go plying into other real estate deals. And this is very unique, very unique, given the size, the fact that it's, the infrastructure has been built out in there, twenty-two units, that short of somebody signing off on a water issue, they might get C O's, so. Although we have to disclose my contracts. I'm sorry? State law, if you have a water issue, it has to be disclosed even if you have a contract by the, by the zoning agent. That is state law.
Yeah, no, I, I.
So if the water's been tested, the bank will have a copy of it. And they have, and they look, and they have to disclose it.
Correct.
The bank knows, are they own.
We don't know, the bank knows, right? We don't know.
The bank knows, but it. I mean, this just kind of was a, I guess, a resident. The only advantage we have is collecting the taxes on it against, yeah, I developed at some point. And to your point, it's good to know because that could stop anything from moving forward. So it's something you have to find out what's there. But the rule's point is, it really isn't under the town's business until, unless it affects water supplies, adjacent, in adjacent properties, then they have to disclose. I, I was thinking of it for one, two, see if we can get rid of all the gospel. I, I've heard six different stories about this one. I had no idea if one or all of them are truth. So number one is to try to get a part of the truth to say what's going on. Number two, if there truly are issues, talk to the state to say, hey, we got a piece of property here, we don't want to be involved in it. But if that property is good to go and we need remediation work, how do you work with the bank? Hand it off to the bank. This is the bank and the state. This is not the town of Bethany. But we can only benefit from it because if we need to get that unstuck, that becomes twenty-two units of tax paying revenue. If you say, if we can get it, I'm like, I think we should have nothing to do with it. We're on item six out of twenty-three. Should we take on this issue or act on it? Well, we've got, we've got to move on.
Do we, do we ask on the proportional discussing, uh, discussions you will see?
Yeah, it's okay with me.
Yeah.
I think we're, do we need something waiting to give?
I mean, it should be, it would be in the minutes and actually.
I think it'll be sufficient if I can give them your name, you said if you need to verify things, contact or versa.
And technically, motion voted on should be online within like twenty-four, forty-eight hours, so that you could just print the minutes. I don't know if we're doing that, cause that's like a very quick turnaround. The motions are forty-eight, they have five components.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think.
I don't know if we're even doing that, cause that's very quick.
I don't think that they're that formal. Ben asked me and I said, no.
Right, okay.
If I said yes, he would've said, oh, good. Up until the time he realized, no, you weren't, but, so.
So it is a way of motion to allow it to enter into informational discussions with the state for housing development issues.
Second.
All fair.
I know.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a great night.
All right. Discussion on possible action for appointment of Patricia Lamorrow to the Women's Commission as a volunteer.
No, I.
Now, did you need me to clarify that today? I talked to Lena, Patricia. So Paul moved up into a, into a, I guess somebody had passed, right? And so Paul moved up into a space and now they need an alternate. So Patricia would fill the alternate position that Paul was.
Did you remember Chris last month, at the last meeting?
I don't really have any further.
Do you know if she has any experience?
Which, um, I talked to her. I think she lived, I don't know, I talked to her. I know she talked with Chris as well, and then Chris said it was fine. But we can get more information if you want.
She sent email. Her interests, her background, her company.
All right. Get the information. All right, discussion on possible action for guide rail for Carrington Road.
So there's parts of Carrington Road, there's a road. One of the neighbors approached Tony about putting a guide rail up because of.
I'm sorry?
For safety issues. There's a lot of drops over. The only problem being it is a scenic road. Okay, so to respect, case a lot of different things with the year, town meetings, you gotta, they've got a safety issue. Have a town meeting for it. Talk to the neighbors, tell them you're playing a little more about.
Yeah, we've got a logistics of it.
But what kind of guard rail?
We wait our options. There's the fancy one like down in Norwalk on the Parkway, it's a lot of money. The next is a weathered steel, looks like you're galvanized, just rusty, would blend in. The third is a wood rail, it's a metal post, the wood rail is bolted to it. That seems to be the most enticing as far as the look.
What does it cost?
The weathered is seventy-three hundred. The wood post on the, on the steel was roughly about nine. And the, it's a fancy one's about twenty plus.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we need the Merrick Parkway, it's got, it's got the steel behind the, the wood.
We just tried weighing every option.
Lower speeds on the.
Right. Just trying to make it, you know, somewhat attractive.
Or text steel, we can put that around top, it's pre, pre-rusted, wood guard rail.
The thought, the thought there was a wind, winded in more wood.
What section of Carrington?
The northern end near Huddle Road. First, first few hundred feet or so, so, please.
My daughter and her family lives on Carrington. And when they first moved in, we brought it up to Tony and he and Largie across from her driveway, put a safety rail. It's very rustic. We love Carrington, we love Bethany, we love the rusticness. But it was waiting to happen. And I don't know if everyone's aware, but in the last couple of weeks, actually a few weeks, not one, but two cars have gone over. One was because the gentleman was trying to avoid a pothole and he went about two and a half feet down. The other young lady, I think the problem is it's become a raceway. She actually, the entire car went over. There are areas.
About two hundred feet down.
Yeah. There are areas where it's a twenty foot drop. This is not something that we're asking because we want, you know, we're paying pains or whatever. This is a serious treacherous issue. It's only a matter of time before somebody gets seriously hurt or killed and then the town's looking at a major lawsuit. We would also like to request maybe not making it a, I don't know what you could put, maybe a no pass through or no, I don't know. No through traffic sign. We have a lot of hikers who park, which is fine, but the problem is when they speed on a dirt road and you lose control of a car and it goes. So this, we're asking for this, some kind of maintenance to the potholes, leave it rustic, leave it beautiful. But definitely there are areas that guard rails, I can't imagine that they aren't there now. We have.
Like I said, being a designated state scenic road, really, not that there's not a lot of, but it has to be declared a safety.
Which we, we just.
If a car going through it.
No, no, I understand what was the point of, was to put the selectmen up to.
Yeah.
And there's a lot more, there's a lot more involved than just them.
Right now, there's just a couple spots like across from the driveway, just wood posts. Cause that's all we could really do without.
Question, what, if it is deemed that, what's the maintenance schedule deemed on that? Because that's the problem. It's not being maintained at a level of safety. So if there's a, you guys have schedules for repaving other roads, is there a schedule for that kind of a road? Cause I do not believe it's being kept.
I was done first thing in the spring, like usual, when in.
Twice a year, we, we thread the road.
It's not, it's.
It's not enough.
With the potholes and the weather, it's just they come back.
Why was it a dirt road?
So that's, that's the issue. Dirt road, safety, that's the whole issue. It has to be maintained there. I understand the, the look, but now it's, it's unsafe. That's the, that's.
For a car to go off because it's avoiding a tall inch pothole, road's not being maintained, you know? And we make phone calls and everything and we know you guys do the best you can, but it's now become a point of a serious safety issue for the road.
Do you know how, um, what would be the ideal maintenance schedule?
I, I guess it would depend on the weather, to be honest, the amount of traffic going through, like if we can reduce through traffic where kids aren't like racing down that road cause it's a fun thing to do, maybe less traffic would help it. We're definitely not asking for it to be paved, cause I think then the speeding and the through traffic is gonna get worse. So we'd like to keep it restored, but we just, some of those, I have a video if anybody wants to see it later, but it is fifteen to twenty feet down in most of the areas.
Yeah, do we need to, did the town meeting pick what kind of material? Cause I imagine a scenic road, aesthetics are gonna be important.
That's why we came to you before we started.
Do you have to tell them exactly what you're proposing or, or do we have to pick whether you want wood or the rusted metal?
Do you have elimination?
Not Merrick Parkway.
I'm just curious about what, what you think.
Either one is gonna blend in, that was the key word.
We don't want to put shiny yellow on the guard rail.
The rusty metal is probably the least maintenance.
That's a one shot.
That's probably gonna last our lifetime. The wood, you know, it's gonna last, but eventually it's wood.
And I've spoken to everyone on that road. Everybody's open to whatever, just to make it safer. I mean, the, the, what you put in across is fine. It's working great. You can't even see it because it looks like tree.
That's just we, oh, for fixing the potholes or the?
No, across from my daughter's driveway.
It's just a couple highway boards with posts.
Can I, can someone review for me why you need a town meeting for this?
It just seems to.
Cause it's a scenic road.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
I don't want you to town meeting, you need to post it in the newspaper and send letters to everybody in the neighborhood. And then, and then they can object and then I think, I think selectmen can hear the.
So they have something to say about why, something should or shouldn't be done.
Right.
Okay.
It's in the town code.
Okay.
It is a town code?
It's in the town code, yeah.
Oh, the town code, okay. And then they'll reobjects them and move forward.
It's all, it's all the bikes, or even somebody on Sperry has a little sliver coming down there.
That's some of the properties, all over the road, right?
Why would someone object to, I'm just curious, like.
Yeah, well, at least, let's say we wanted to pay for safe, you know, then somebody may object to that, you know? I don't, I don't think somebody would object to what you are.
A little bit, things about, one, I have complaints about clear, too much clearing or milling's got put down.
Yeah, we put millings down where you're posting that.
We mistake, our contractor mistake, we painted a yellow line on part of Sperry Road. We had to go back and paint it black because the people, I wasn't aware of. It's a scenic road, that was another story.
Another time.
Sounds like we need guard rail for Carrington Road.
Yeah, that, that'll help.
And also maybe no through traffic.
I don't, I mean, what if a sign, but they don't have any legal significance.
But there's nothing saying I can't, so maybe they'll, they'll keep the honest people honest.
What's the one when you're coming, just you're coming out of the flats in Woodbridge, they have a no through trucks sign, the traffic over, but you can't give anybody a ticket.
Right, right.
It's just a suggestion. In my opinion, if I see a no through and there's traffic, I know it goes through. So it owns a contractor, so I mean, if I see that sign, I know it's a cut through. So I don't think the signs are, I really don't think the signs are helpful. Yeah, maybe, but you know what I'm saying? I don't know that the sign would.
Wait until the next time of year, we can just totally old, police car over and leave it there, permanent.
So, so do we have a motion? I guess start the process.
That's your job.
Yeah. Now, I guess a question on that. Who does the process, is planning and zoning thing?
I'm not sure.
Want to look into that?
Right, well, we'll find out who's supposed to send out the notice.
It says Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen, okay.
Act into it, probably. It's also in the area of one seven two.
I didn't, I didn't say we have a hearing. I thought that if there was, once you notice that there was a, somebody complaining, you would have a hearing, but maybe not. What's that?
I believe there's a hearing at zoning.
Well, it's gonna be municipal proofing, so we gotta make sure we're pro.
You want to know?
So it's, so it's a planning, so it's a.
Guard rail, well, really it exists, it's a road widening or a guard rail.
I'll have to, yeah, I'll have to find out, I'll pull up the, the code.
You want me to just say?
Yeah.
It just says alteration scenic road to correct a potential hazard to safety. When the selectmen find a potential hazard exists, it shall, it shall publish a notice in newspaper, general circulation, at the same time provide a copy of the notice to the Chair of the Conservation Commission, to all landowners along the scenic road in question, to anyone with frontage along that section of road. So specify location nature of the hazard and briefly describe the alterations proposed, so there has to be a proposal. And then if no written objection is filed with the selectman within ten days of publishing the notice, the alteration may proceed. If there is an objection, then a meeting has to be held for the Board of Selectmen, no sooner than ten days. So, so basically the, the easiest part would be do the notice, notify the Conservation Commission and the landowners and have a plan. And then after that, if no one objects after the ten days, you can go ahead.
Tony already had a measured out the price now, so we're, we're ready to go once the process is done.
And you're for this, the seventy-three hundred, that's, yeah.
That would be the, the weathered steel.
Right. Pre-weathered or wood was another couple, or two, three thousand.
Right up, we're proposing to do some.
Could I ask a question please? Since I would not be a person who would get the notice about that, but because I'm someone who lives on the lone pave road in the neighborhood, taking that out of the traffic pattern in that area would be a significant issue for a lot of us who live there.
What do you mean taking it out of traffic?
Making it no through traffic.
Yeah, we're not, we're not talking about that now. Well, I was just mentioning.
It's, it would be one of the significant changes and it is what they asked for.
We're just talking about guardrail.
This is just, yeah, officially, it's just guardrail, I know it was mentioned, but we're not doing the no through traffic or anything.
But I would get the notice, so I wouldn't. Cause I don't.
Yeah, we can leave those as in the paper?
I would like to address that if I could. I, I think the no through traffic is really what we're talking about, the young people. I highly doubt you're speeding at sixty miles an hour down dirt roads, that's what.
Okay, this isn't actually the place to be asked for that. I just, I just wondered to my knowledge.
Um, proceed, like, yeah.
We just go, do, do we have to say it is a safety issue? Or is it enough, enough to just record it?
Yeah, proceed to notice and, um, for guide rails on.
I don't think it's a safety issue.
Necessary.
Second.
All right.
Got that? All right. So we, uh, we move to proceed with the notifications required by the ordinance for scenic roads. Because we find that there is a danger of, of guardrails.
You have to pick what you're gonna do though, what you're gonna note, what you're actually notifying? Which, which option? Cause, cause the notification should have that.
So I thought we were discussing that last. Or, you want.
Cortex, the cortex.
Well, you think one is fine.
You guys.
Sweet cross, do you mean it?
It blends right in, I mean.
If, if people object, we'll, we'll consider, consider wood. Right. They, they.
It looks like it's been there for, for fifty years, by design.
Sounds great.
There's more of what's around town, so.
Right.
You're, just so, what, this, your motion is make a finding that there's potential hazard to the safety of the traveling public on a scenic road, recorded with one sixty eight dash four E one. Yep. And, and to advance the process for the. Yes, okay, just wanna be sure.
Exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's it, is that gonna be, some people ramble on, friends are like, all right, I move we do it. We were taking a minute, it's like, wait, what?
All right, then we have, uh, next is a disposition of unused vehicle, for both of us.
It's the same, it's us. So we have an old, I believe it was a fire marshal's car.
Ninety nine.
And they got passed down to us, we used it to run for parts and miscellaneous and kinda run its course. Needs a lot of work, starting to rust, holes on the side of it.
It's a ninety nine?
Yes.
I have to think they're new.
We just don't have any use for it anymore. Don't have a title, we tried finding a title and had no luck.
The constables used to use it when they did the road work.
They don't need it anymore.
They won't. It's just not over. So we can, we can either sell it to junkyard.
Well, I, I used to go to the fire department, um, practice.
They take it?
I mean, that'd do it.
Sounds great.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, we had a bunch, or when they're done with it, we'll junk it.
They'll take care of all that.
Probably get the same for junk after they tear the door.
Probably more, it's a lot more oil.
Do we need to move it, donate the truck?
Well, we're giving up the common assets.
Okay.
Wanted to go through proper.
It's fairly inept.
Well, it's probably an asset.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to take the motion to get, to donate the, to donate it to the fire marshal.
Second.
All right.
Aye. Easy.
Yeah, I believe we have.
So, thank you.
Ten discussing a possible action for better.
Don't ask me more. I'll tell you on my, too. I was, I was tracking when I entered the room. I was working. Uh, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Becksy Quist, I'm the assessor for the town of Bethany. I was asked to come here and speak with you about some local ordinance options that have been presented to all the municipalities in the state of Connecticut due to a law that was passed for veterans who are hundred percent totally disabled. Uh, I just wanna read you a little history of it. A bill was passed in the legislature in June of twenty four. And it was all enacted, every municipality had to enact it for the October one, twenty twenty four day list. For one hundred percent totally permanently disabled veterans with a service connection disability. Um, at first, the law was not written with the hundred percent, so they had to go back and call a special session to include the hundred percent. Um, so it went from about thirty thousand people in the state to about twelve thousand after they did that. To, um, right here in Bethany, we have five veterans who take advantage of this for about six hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars, or almost twenty thousand dollars in taxes. This June, the legislature decided that because they wrote the law very poorly, and even when they corrected it, it was still left a lot of, as we call hanging chance. So they left it to the municipalities that they felt like they wanted to clean it up. And offer more to some of their veterans than they were willing to offer through the state law. Two of the ordinance that, uh, the first letting me ask me to speak about. Um, one of them involves the widows of veterans. The way the law is currently written is that if your spouse, who may have been qualified for this program, one hundred totally disabled under the law, everything would have been fine if he was living as of October first of twenty twenty four. If he died on October second of twenty twenty four, that spouse would be eligible for that exemption. If he died before October first of twenty twenty four, they were out of luck. And it's out of character because every other veteran law bestowed on the surviving spouse what that veteran was eligible for upon their death. There's never a timeline that says they died before this or that. Um, so the new local option ordinance that Bethany could pass would be to allow a widow of a veteran who passed before October one of twenty twenty four, to allow them the same benefits as if that veteran was living at the time you just watched her face. As, as of this moment, we only know of one who would qualify. But it seems to me like, why would you have a law for one veteran enactment when all the other laws include the spouse? But that is something that I'm putting in front of the board of selectmen to consider. There also was another part of the law. Because the VA is the one who, I guess is the one who's entitled to make the decision of what your percentage is in terms of if you're one hundred percent totally disabled. There's also another part of their assignment is that if somebody may be eighty percent of the law, but they deem to be one hundred percent disabled due to their disabilities, maybe not all of them are service connected. But they are paying them at the same rate as they would pay a veteran who was one hundred percent totally permanently disabled due to their service connections. A lot of veterans feel at that point, they're saying I'm a hundred percent. Not under the rating they are, but they're paying on that. So there, another local ordinance option is they're allowing municipalities, that if you feel that that's unfair, they're, they're being considered one hundred percent, but their rating is saying they're only eighty. You have the choice to give them the same benefit as the person who is one hundred percent totally permanently disabled. At this present moment, again, there's only one person that we know of that that would qualify for. But it's my duty to present these to you. Um, there are two other parts of the law that I, that we sort of discussed, we haven't really run any numbers. But that, there's also another part of that that would allow the towns to allot the primary lot up to two acres. For anybody who qualifies. And then another part is to set a cap. So that if you had two hundred of these veterans and we all, they all lived in ten million dollar houses, that would be a burden on the town of Bethany and you would say, well, guess what, let's set the cap at our average assessment, which maybe would be a million. Um, I think that comes more from the southern coast. Because, let's be honest, somebody living in a ten million dollar house and they're one hundred percent totally disabled, that house is free. You pay no taxes. You pay on the land, which you wouldn't pay on the house. So, you know, that's a, that's a big tax exemption. I don't know if that's something that wants to be further looked at to see what the tax implication would be. I'm happy to try to do that, but I did not run any of those numbers, but the reason that we're, we were looking at these other two is that people have approached us. Those two people have approached us and said they feel it's unfair that they are not included within these. And at the time, there weren't the local options, but in June they passed these to try to put, you know, they put the onus on the towns to say, if you wanna make them whole, go ahead. Where is the state aren't gonna require you to do it? You can do a local option to do that, and because you are the governing body, and it's one in here to inform you of that. So that's, so it's putting them all in your court.
Didn't we talk about this a couple of months ago? Or was, am I confusing this with something else?
You may have, it only went into effect June of twenty five.
There wasn't talk about the, not the local option, but the service connected disability and.
I may have, did I come in front of you and give you the, the amount that it was, yeah, probably the tax implication of it?
Yeah, I think you, you did or someone did, right?
And this is only eligible to start October first of twenty twenty five. So that if, if you decide those two people couldn't go back, you couldn't go back and get them in twenty twenty four.
It's BS, before sale.
So with, so with Ben's assistance.
Which Ben?
Attorney, attorney. Okay, with attorney Ben's assistance and you choose, I'm sure he could wisely create language for a local option.
Yes.
And I know you're very familiar with it.
Yes. What, what's the process, we just vote on it, or is it a town meeting or?
You are the governing body, you do not have to vote. But it's just, you're the governing body, unless everything you vote on has to go to town meeting.
Well, this would be, and it would be by orders.
Yeah, it's an order.
Yeah, so what we would do is we would draft some opposed ordinance, and then we would bring it here for your, and then we would refer it to the town meeting for that option. That would be the process. So, uh, it would probably, I mean, it wouldn't be acted upon before the November, we, I, we'd probably have something to uh, for consideration at your October or November meeting, but not advanced prior to the, the end of this term.
So the question is, do we ask Ben to draft the options?
I just wanted to know, like, to look at, I might have to look through my notes because I don't know if we voted on something before, and I don't wanna, you, you don't remember?
We didn't, we didn't vote on it.
On this? You mean, something like this?
Yeah, I, I don't know, I just, I just wanna make sure.
As I said, it was, it only enacted come June, go into September, October, July, August.
We did a party type convention for the trailer.
On the day?
Didn't?
You were part of it? Yeah. You were here. The trailer placed down by the whippersnapper.
Oh, God, I think the trailer doesn't know.
The trailer selling.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, you did, you did, yeah, for three years, yes, you did. And that is, and that is starting the assumption.
But that's the only thing I think we voted on, yeah.
So do you wanna move forward with this? Drop something?
I mean, it doesn't oblige us to.
No, you could refer to your ordinance. Yeah, you could, so your options would be to send it to the ordinance committee and ask them to consider it and, or you could just send it to me and I would bring something back to you. But, and I, but before it can advance, uh, to a town meeting, we have to have something in ordinance form that this order.
I was curious about your recommendation.
I'm just administrative, I don't make any recommendations.
You don't have an opinion?
I do.
You don't wanna share? It's fine if you don't.
No, I mean, I'm just here to give you the opportunity and the facts.
Listen, you, you, you're the assessor for a couple of their towns as well?
I am for four towns.
And what are they doing with their third act and they considered it?
Uh, one town is considering it pretty much in this like type of stage. And the other, I presented all the information to them, I haven't heard, and the other one was sort of like, hmm. I made a presentation in front of all of them, so. And again, it's just me giving you the information and the facts, and then you guys decide what you feel is best for the community.
What do you think, Sarah?
I don't have a problem with it. I think it's really, it really stinks the way the state set up this law when you exempt it. If somebody passed the day before this law was enacted, you're not entitled to it and that benefit. But if a day later you are, that's just, that doesn't sit well with me personally.
Well, between the two, I think the, the surviving spouse one's stronger, because I'm saying that it's always the surviving spouse gets it, for some reason now, they said somebody passed away before last October, then, then you don't get it. Yet the other one, I can't barely understand, it's like, well, he's not fully disabled, but sort of, and just the town wanna honor that up to the full amount of disability. That seems a little weaker.
That's, yeah, that's, cause, you know, the administrative stuff is always like that, right? Like, I, my understanding is the VA, VA is saying officially eighty percent is an example, but we're gonna pay you as if it's one hundred percent. I don't know, I, I, I agree, I think the surviving spouse is more clear, um, but.
Look, we don't have to join, but, yeah, then are the committee looking at the pressing ordinance?
Right, it's, cause without something to look at, it sort of feels hypothetical, you know, right? You know, um, if we have this language, maybe we could, you know.
Well, I think maybe what you should.
You could not keep on, and.
Yeah, sure, uh, we probably want, uh, proposed language and anticipate what the anticipated financial outcome.
Yeah, we don't necessarily know, right, if people haven't claimed yet.
No one. And the financial package, like, what, twenty seven hundred dollars? Yeah, twenty seven hundred dollars.
Three thousand, yeah, three thousand.
Yeah, so. You have lessons because once you get this APA, if you're one hundred percent totally disabled, you were already receiving like twenty one thousand dollars of an exemption, or, you know, it could be more depending on if you have any severe disabilities. And that goes away, so you're not eligible for it anymore, you just get the APA. So there is a little offset of it. Take care.
Take care. Okay. Especially with hospital life and regarding the new national opioid settlements.
So, yes, so just to update the board on why we received this. So, a, you proposed national opioid settlement that had been reached, you know, per due bankruptcy. So there was a lawsuit filed regarding the opioid crisis, and Purdue filed a bankruptcy. And they've been trying to resolve this lawsuit through the bankruptcy process. We received this agreement because we are a, we're the subdivision of a state that is entitled to receive monies as part of that national settlement. So based upon my review of the court, the bankruptcy documents, Connecticut is scheduled to receive, if the settlement is ultimately approved, nine payments totaling in excess of $60 million. This does not guarantee that this town will receive any. So let me just make that clear. By signing this agreement, or approving this agreement, the town of Bethany is not guaranteed to receive any money. However, whether or not the settlement advances is dependent upon the number of positive responses it receives from municipal subdivisions throughout the various territories throughout the country. So if there is an inadequate number of responses, then the settlement will be defeated and will not proceed. If, if it, there is a proper number of responses that is required by bankruptcy court, then the settlement will be entered, and presumably Connecticut will receive its dividend over the nine scheduled payments. I think the first payment is 15 plus $1 million. And I don't know the terms of those payments still, but it is 15, nine payments totaling in excess of $60 million. And whether or not Bethany will receive any money will be dependent upon the state and how the state gives that. So all you are doing is by voting in favor of this, is agreeing to authorize the first selectmen to sign the, the documents and return it, get it returned through electronic signature via DocuSign, and then you will just be sending a affirmative vote in favor of entering into the settlement on behalf of the state of Connecticut as its political subdivision. So Connecticut has potentially over 169 votes. So there's no downside to the town, but it's not necessarily.
Well, yeah, the, the only downside is we can't sue them, we're not going to sue them either.
Well, that's, I, I didn't say that, but I thought that might have happened.
It's a little late since their bankruptcy.
I think we should do it. Let's do it in a month.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll move to, that Sally should be authorized to enter into Adrian and, and sign and be permitted.
Second motion. All right.
All right.
Okay. Number 12, 250th committee.
I can do a little bit. We have a couple of members here. I'll take the opportunity to stand up out of the metal chair. Well, this, this board has appointed, had a couple of different meetings, and a number of members, I think it's up to nine now?
Four, five, six, seven, eight.
Yeah, and we have another one interested. Emily and Carol are also committee members, and they can feel free to jump in. But what we're coming to, for specific, we've had two meetings. We met at the end of July, and just met last week. We're, we have a whole wish list of things. I think I showed it to you, Sally. We're not doing all those things, like 25 things we could do. But we want to, this is the 250th of the country, not Bethany. But we did take some examples from what we did for the 175th back in 2007. And one of the things we need is, you know, we, we have this committee, we have, our budget is zero. I've talked to Leslie a little bit, and at our meeting last week, we wanted to come to the selectmen to ask for some seed money to, for example, to purchase the commemorative, commemorative items to, to sell. You know, if you buy it for $10 and sell it for 15 or whatever. And Emily has some show and tell on that. But we were, we voted to ask for $2,000 for seed money that would be repaid through selling things. This is, it's actually the exact same figure that was asked for in 2007. The, the town came in, and everything will be run through the town books, so we'll get the advantage of tax exempt. You know, if, if it needs a check, there'll be a town check request just as a, as an organ of the town, essentially. I don't know, Leslie, if you have anything to add to, to that procedure-wise?
No. 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 Will and I covered everything earlier today. It's just a matter of the Board of Finance determining where that money would come from, unless it's coming out of another department's currently allocated line item. So, or if we're going to add to a department's line item, so that will, the Board of Finance will take that up next week if we need to add on the line somewhere.
Right. And the, the only time-sensitive part of it is we're thinking of our kickoff for doing stuff would be Harvest Fest. And Emily did a lot of research, which she will.
So I have show and tell. So this is actually the Bevan Bell Company, which is in East Hampton, Connecticut. Interestingly enough, they were also founded in 1832. I, as you can tell, this is my personal cowbell. They have the officially licensed America 250 items for sale. I bought all of them. And I brought them in for show and tell at the committee line out, because I'm on there. I brought them in to show to the committee last week, and they were very excited about the cowbell. With that, yes, so I have reached out to Bevan Bells. I've been in touch with the sales department already. Specifically for this, we are hoping on the backside to have it say Bethany celebrates America. I did get some pricing for that. There is a minimum of 25 to be purchased for bulk order, but we are hoping for 100 bulk order, and that would, the price for that plus the imprint fee, one-time imprint fee, is just under 700, but that does not include shipping. That would be, once the order is placed, shipping with the possibility to maybe go back. So anyway, so that would be our kickoff commemorative that we would hope to sell at this year's Harvest.
Harvest Festival would have a table. It'd just be something to.
Draw people in, and.
So we're, we're just hoping that the Board of Selectmen will give us $2,000 to get started. You'll get the money back for the sales. And we're also asking other groups in town, but this is what we did many, many years ago, and it was great when Bethany did get his money back.
Did they sell out last night?
I don't know. Good enough cowbell, so we'll sell.
I did work with a record.
Just warning, you can have them for the Harvest Festival. All of you who are going are going to hear.
Yep. Sorry. It's already driving us.
Might be better than squawking chicken again.
How much are you planning on selling those for?
None of the prices yet, Sally. We're hoping that.
Oh, let's just say $700.
Yeah, and then we're hoping that, depending on how, we don't know how much it's going to cost, but the Bethany is always America in the balance.
Well, I thought that was with it.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Approximately, yeah, 700. It's, it wouldn't be finalized until we place the actual order. But the, there is a one-time imprint fee of $42.
But the 700 for 100 though?
Yeah, right around there. My, again, that's not including shipping and handling if we go that route.
Well, see? Wait a minute. If we really wanted to do this right, in 2007, when we got $2,000 for the seed money, today, $2,000 was worth $3,160. So we're giving you a discount, right? So I'm asking for 50% less. How could you say no?
Well, and, and one of the things, Debbie Demander, who's on the committee as well, is one of the, is, I think it's 2 o'clock on July 4th, it's, everyone's supposed to be ringing bells. So we can say, get your bells now for, for, for the July 4th, 2:00 PM bell reading. I think, I, we think they'll sell out.
I think, oh, and they do have that one. That's an official.
Well, just the bell, it doesn't say cowbell, but Bethany should be cowbell.
Oh, Will Fairns, no. Well, Will Fairns did, but who asked for more cowbell?
Just promotional advertising also with, with the money from this.
Who, who asked for more cowbell? Will Fairns.
Christopher Walken.
Oh, Christopher Walken.
They do, Bethan Bells, you would know them. They do have that bell we could purchase. But they also did the bell from It's a Wonderful Life. We also purchased that.
We need like the panda picture of Christopher Walken or something.
Motion?
Right. Motion's approved.
$10,000 for the committee.
Second.
Yeah, please.
All right.
Thank you.
And what about the, um.
I was just going to say, I think 100 is not enough. I'm not like, are you ordering?
Especially if I'm, I need the cowbell. Where's the cowbell?
A gavel, a cowbell, so, cowbell.
Regarding the EDC, I'm all petitioned given to the authority to transcurse proposed explanatory explanatory.
I wonder how many.
Okay, I could, I could speak to that as well. Now, I think I'm done, but. Basically, we, we did receive the Economic Development Commission, had a successful petition drive, is, is a pretty, you know, it's a challenging number. It's 10% of the voters in town, and they surpassed that. The nearly 500 signatures to place this on the, on the ballot for November. The, I sent you the selectman email earlier today. I have, I have to work with Attorney Ben about the actual question, because I have some questions about the question, exactly the layout. The last time we voted on this was 1981, and I, I wouldn't believe, I wasn't thinking about alcohol back in 1981 for some reason. Star Wars or something, but. The, so I do need some help on that from Vin. And I just bring up the explanatory text part, because the timing of it, it's, it's in the statute, it's a "may." The selectmen may do this, you're not required to. And the Economic Development Commission will have their own, you know, be doing their own effort to promote it. Explanatory text is a little bit different in that, it, I haven't read this, I'm sorry, but.
The lower half of that is basically the three options that are on there.
Yeah. It's, the explanatory text cannot advocate for or against anything. You can't do pros and cons, although I kind of try to avoid that. It's, it's more of the, the process of voting. What does it mean if, if I vote this? The purpose? And I, I haven't, literally, we got this Friday, we just finished checking it today, and so coming to, I, I wanted to get it on the agenda, because we knew it was, it was coming in. So this is kind of the opportunity to, to, if you're doing this either now, or you have to have a special meeting this month, because it must go in with absentee ballots that are available October 3rd for the November 4th election. You can't decide in the middle of October to do explanatory text and not send it. Everyone has to get the same thing. So this is kind of our opportunity between now and October 3rd is when ballots go out.
Will, if you could explain before the body what it takes to actually pass.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's failed before, not because it didn't receive the, a higher number of votes, but because it has to receive more than.
50%.
50% of the total of people vote. So it's, so you look at the number of people who vote in the general election, let's say for the sake of conversation, it's three cows. That means you have to get 1,501 to vote in favor of the question in order for it to pass.
Just three questions. But the, the way I, the way I saw the, the three questions were the ones taken out of 3-11, but the specific permit was the one that was in the petition, restaurant liquor. I think it's kind of unfortunate they didn't just ask that, but they mirrored the language in 3-10, which says.
It was already told in due.
That was the interpretation that three, three questions had to be asked.
Well, because they, now they petitioned whether or not the sale of alcohol liquor shall be permitted in this town, or whether the sale of alcohol liquor shall be permitted in one or more of the classes. And then I think that first part forces you to do at least one and maybe two of the, instead of the question they were asking for, now they have to ask, do you want all liquor, every liquor permit is allowed, or no permits?
You have to ask all three.
But if they had only asked one, they'd only asked their question, you could have just asked their question.
But you don't have, I don't know the way the statute works. And that's why if you look at every, at the, every time this town has done this in the past, there's been three questions. And if you go, that's the way the law.
I mean, I think it's, whatever. They, they put the petition in, so I think you have to do it the way, that way now. But I think if they'd only asked one question, you could have just.
We weren't allowed to. All right. According to Attorney Reno. And, and Will, they, they gave us the guidance on the.
Given that.
They wrote, they wrote that paper for us.
Given that, what, I saw Woodbridge did it the same way, three questions, last time Bethany did, but was it Bridgewater and Wilton? They just had one question. I'm changing, so, do we have package stores? Do we allow restaurant liquor permits? So I, I guess, whatever, they petitioned for everything, so. So the downside is restaurant wine and beer is gone. That cannot, so by filing, I'm glad it's a high number, by filing the petition, you've got three questions, people have to vote on them. So no matter how many people vote, will they, they go on it. Okay, but if some people don't vote, whatever, there will be votes cast, and there will be a majority. Either the majority is going to be for dry town, or the majority is going to be for restaurant liquor, or the majority is going to be for all, all permits. And because, there always will be a majority, because you add the all permits plus the restaurant liquor together. So there's no way that it won't pass, and there's no way restaurant wine and beer can continue. That won't.
Well, no, it hasn't passed in the, in the, in the past, because it hadn't received the record.
The middle one passed. The last time we did it, it was restaurant wine and beer. That one passed. We added the all liquor to the middle one. So that's probably what's going to happen, unless it's either that or it's going to be a dry town.
Well, I don't think, but, I mean, it, it's too bad, I think they could have just done the one thing, and it would have been yes or no.
They could have done one thing.
Yeah. It would have been cheaper. It would have been easier. But now the voting machines, you can't vote yes or no, you can only vote yes on one. There's no such thing as a no vote. You have to pick one of the three.
Right.
And I don't know, do our voting machines let you do that?
Well, that, well, that's in the.
Or we can have to pay the ballots.
No, I, I reached out to the Secretary of State, and he's a brand new machine.
Well, no, it hasn't passed in the, in the, in the past because it hadn't received the requisite. No, the, the middle one passed. The last time we did it was restaurant wine and beer. That one passed. We added the all liquor to the middle one. So that's probably what's gonna happen, unless it's either that or it's gonna be a dry town. Well, I don't think, but I mean, it, it's, it's too bad. I think they could have just done the one thing and it would have been yes or no.
They could have done one thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would have been cheaper. It would have been easier. But now the voting machines, you can't vote yes or no. You can only vote yes on one. There's no such thing as a no vote.
You have to pick one of the three.
Right.
Correct.
And I don't know, do our voting machines let you do that?
Well, that, well, that's in the email. No, I, I reached out to the Secretary of State. These are random machines. We use them once for a reference. I know the old lever machines. You can do it.
Yeah, if you pulled down one, if you tried to pull a second, it wouldn't like.
I asked that question today, and they basically said, well, uh, see what your town attorney says first, and then we'll, we'll get into it.
But that's, the town attorney can't tell us whether the computer. I suspect, I suspect this is on the oval, and you're gonna have to fill in one of your field. Right? And the computer's gonna, that's how these things operate, don't they? So what happens if somebody fills in two? It'll be.
It'll, it'll pick out.
Well, it'll, it'll.
The whole ballot will pick out.
Do they get a new ballot then?
They can get a new ballot. The sides are gonna have to be taken off, and then they, they're gonna have to still. The whole ballot again, not just that question.
Or a trajectory.
Cause, cause my layout was.
Or choose one, or the following should be enough. Or we say.
It's a little, little bit.
Choose one.
Yeah, it's not a yes or no. It's just choose which.
Right, so as I said, usually I'm a yes or no, so we won't be, just choose yes to one. So the new thing, the new liquor thing for town will be one of those three. It will not, it cannot remain restaurant wine and beer only. That's not on the.
Correct.
So if somebody really doesn't want liquor, they have to vote for a dry town.
They don't have to vote all.
But that doesn't affect the outcome, as long as one person votes for it. Yeah, it's, it's nothing.
Fifty percent.
There's, it, you need fifty one, fifty point oh one percent. So if there's three thousand total voters, but only two thousand people voted on it. Oh, I thought, I thought you added together the number of cast. No.
No.
No. So if people show up to vote for town officers and say, I'm not voting on that. Then, then you may not actually get the requisite number of votes.
And nothing happens.
Right now.
Oh, I thought it was just.
That's why I was using the three thousand, because it's, it's fifteen hundred or so. Fifteen oh one, right? So, so if you don't get that requisite number, then the initiative pass.
It's based on, on the ballot, you know, on the cross off thing, and, and the actual number that we have to officially equip it.
I thought it was total votes cast on that question. No, it, it, it's a, total votes cast on that question, but that total vote has to be above a certain number, which is half, one more than half of the total people voting in the general election. So, you know, there's a total number of people voting on the liquor question. No, the general election. That's what I'm saying, but that, that, the total number voting on those has to be fifty percent for. Has to be one, whatever, whichever question passes has to be fifty percent of the votes. They, they, one question passed, it has to have a total number of votes that is equal to at least one more than fifty percent of the total voters in the total election, right? So, so if forty-five percent of the voters in the election fill out the question, and they all vote for restaurant wine. So, anyway.
That's a lot.
It's, it's unfortunate that it, uh, worded that way, that, um.
I didn't write it.
Yeah.
Can you look at that? Change that up?
What did I write?
That's in your list?
But, so I, I don't know whether, I, I guess I'd have to see the explanatory text if it's, if it's, uh.
Do we even need it?
But it's like, if it, if it makes it more confusing, then it's, it's not helpful.
I was gonna recommend.
I'm only writing it, and I'm.
No, thanks for that.
This is your opportunity, so you don't have.
The actual questions are pretty easy. Not sure, because, no, if you want it to stay the way it is, that's not an option, so.
Not going.
If you want, if you want a restaurant wine and beer only, you have to wait a year, get a petition, and then.
If you wanted to go back to it.
And then restaurant liquor could not exist anymore. If, if somebody filed a petition, the other thing would, it would wipe it out.
Correct. If they want to do, if someone wants to make that effort, like, it's.
Yeah, it just seems a little weird that you can't just vote on every option. It is what it is. Yeah, I don't think we, I mean, if, you gotta assume people are intelligent and have, and understand what's liquor permit. If they can't understand, then they shouldn't be drinking. Again, this, this, this town is not called in favor of expanding it for the past. No, they, they did. It used to be a yes.
So, 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 the history, the, the.
Do we have wine and beer now?
They did, they, they did. This, this, this is the one from eighty-one. It was, it was restaurant beer. And they came in from restaurant beer and wine.
But do you, but do you see how?
But they, they didn't.
Do you see how, I mean, I guess ours would be the same thing, but how they, um, they added.
For full.
So, so this one didn't have enough, right? Um, because you needed a major, and, yeah, I think they were doing.
They didn't have enough to do four, like, four alcohol.
No, yeah, they, they did all alcohol, restaurant wine and beer only, which was an increase from just the beer, and then no permits. So the five hundred and fifty-four was not a majority. It's only a third or something. But then the statute says you add all alcohol, you figure if people want a lot of alcohol, they'd be also happy with some alcohol. So I, I think the one in the middle is gonna pass.
It's most likely.
It's kind of because of that.
There's a thing, there's a time and scale to that.
Yeah, wow, they, right, so, but I didn't realize, I didn't realize you had to, uh.
Rip the number.
Oh, of, of the votes cast over here. Anyway, I don't, I don't like to use explanatory text. I mean, the questions are thirty dash eleven. Shall the sale of alcoholic liquor, liquor, in parentheses, permit for all alcohol? And, and it's gonna be like this, right? The thing, permit for all alcohol liquor will be. Yeah, I mean, the town clerk sent me an email, and I agreed with him, and he says, he believed in three questions. Who would vote for a special, that would be the sale of alcohol. The only thing that's, uh, different is instead of specified permit or permits, it'll say restaurant, whatever, full liquor. Yeah, so a permit for all, restaurant, full liquor permit, with no. And it'll probably be the middle one, because you add the two together, or, or we have a dry town, which was a problem. Or people. Because no permits means no liquor store, or.
Right.
Well, you're, yes, but you're, you, you're, you're not gonna do it. It's not gonna have a retroactive effect. So if someone's in the case now on a ballot, you get the permit, you're not willing to be stripping them, right? You're just not gonna be expanded. About a hundred percent sure. There was something in here that said.
Are we a hundred percent sure on that? That, that's grandfather? Cause my concern is that if people do vote no, I have to move.
When any town has voted on the question of liquor permits, any liquor permit granted in town which is not in accordance with the vote shall be void, except manufacturer permits and cafe permits. I'm not a hundred percent sure that the liquor commission doesn't go there. I don't think it's gonna go that way.
Well, the thing about it is, 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 you, the board doesn't have any say in it at this point.
Yeah, right.
All, all you have to say is, is they plan to.
Right. Right, I don't think that's necessary. The, the only thing is, is E D C members, as, as people, you can do it. You can't spend a town on it, so you could vote yes or no. And just as a cautionary tale, because I just dealt with this out of Southbury, uh, on it. If anyone is going to spend any money to promote a question or to go against, to, to, to encourage against, if you're sending out any literature, you have to make sure it has proper attribution, right? So that, you know, paid for by the, you know, otherwise you run the risk of violating election laws. All right, so if the, if the corporation is, the Economic Development Commission is gonna do something, uh, even if it's just sending out an email, make sure it has proper attribution. But it shouldn't say.
They can't.
It shouldn't say, oh, yes, fine. I, I'm saying, someone could say, you know, I'm, I'm sending this out, I, I'm a member of, but I'm not sending it on behalf of, you know, and. Say, anything that's.
Just like saying.
Not in Bethany. What needs to have proper attribution.
I do have requests like, oh, why do you send it home?
Well, then make sure she has the proper attribution. Yeah, you can send it out to people, but you can't send it out. It's just, if there's not an attribution, it's violation and risk of. Maybe have to vote or not.
You think you're gonna lie, you wanna talk to you about the actual, like, the, the layout of it? What are the emails that I need to do that?
I will, uh, be happy to.
A discussion on possible action establishing ethics commission.
How would this fit on the agenda?
Well, we don't have that, that is, so we're, we could want.
You need like a code too. Because otherwise, we don't have an ethics commission.
Right.
I guess looking into, or get it, you know.
Well, we can start.
Gather, gather what, some other, some other towns.
We definitely need one, I think.
Yeah, so the initiative would come out of this body, and it would shoot every by way of ordinance we want it. So again, it's. Yeah, I think I'd start with trying to gather other towns', uh, examples, and then. There's probably different ways that they, they can do it. And it would be more than just the, the ordinational thing of a commi, you know, ethical commission you've got for today. They wouldn't have it. Well, what would you do? If, if you need some kind of code for them to. You, you would probably wanna adopt a code and a commission at the same time. Uh, you know, so that there's something in place, because the commission would be the arbiter of, of, you know, court complaints. So you'd need something for that to do, so.
So they couldn't get together and work on the code?
Well, they could. You could set it up that way, or again, this, this body should probably adopt the, the, the code. Put the code in place, and then appoint a commission, we think that that is. But if you wanted to do a commission first, and have a commission, make a recognition to this body, you'd do it that way. There's no, there's no specific path that you have to follow.
Um, Sam, have you heard of anyone maybe expressing interest in contributing to this stuff?
Um, no, not, not really. Yeah, if you wanna move forward with this, then we'll start from the beginning.
Yeah, I mean, I think he's got it, yeah, for sure.
All right, so, uh.
I mean, ethics questions are sometimes difficult, right? Like, someone could innocently do something or say something, and realize. You know, that it's a violation of anything, right? So. And even, you know, even people who have, um, work, you know, um, opportunities at work, or through whatever, you know, boards or whatever else that they're on, um, or things that they do in their private lives, that they have opportunity to think about ethics, um, it's always good refresh, a refresher, you know, even for people who are more, um, you know, used to thinking about those issues. You know, so I think it'd be a good print, to have the discussion, to see, to see where it goes.
Actually, I'm out of, you know, it's just gonna come back next month with some.
Yeah, either have these codes, or some individuals are interested in serving.
So we put something maybe in the bulletins?
Yeah.
All right, just to.
Yeah, we put something in the bulletin about the nickel.
Oh, I don't know.
I could, if I can add the, um, the survey that we sent out, I did get, uh, I think it was almost three hundred responses. Um, yeah, we, we have a survey ready to go if you guys are interested, um, to see if there's interest. We just need to populate kind of what the expectation would be for, for the petition. But that's already tempered it out, if you guys are okay with posting on Facebook, the website, and then of course, you can add a, um, so these bulletins are up still as well.
Whatever ethics committee from most small towns is, they meet rarely.
Right.
It's true, this is why, if there's no code in place, then their job is to, you know, compile information and recommend the ethics code. But after that, unless there's complaints. In, in twenty years, a town of ours, ethics commission has not met, uh, uh, been in town very. They met once prior to my tenure.
Well, they haven't been in the news as much as we have.
Well, well, by having the code usually is, uh, preventive.
Right.
If it kind of defines, you know, should I, should I bid on this, you know, when my second cousin's on the board, or, you know, if it kind of says you don't, then you don't even get into trouble, because you're like, oh, the expectation is I, I do want that. So it helps even without having, you know, the.
Definitely. Hey, I think it'd be great to put on case, definitely, to be what interested in.
Yeah, yeah. All right, good. Um, next item, let's see, back to the.
Helps.
Yeah, the, yeah, the helps even is fifteen. New information allowed.
I mean, this is it, right? There's no.
Yeah, yeah.
Legally.
Right, it was simple.
Yeah, and it's, if you're not happy, it is kicking out.
Right.
Seven cents a pound.
It sounds good.
Okay.
Rule we go for, the authorized Sals signing agreement.
One second.
All fair.
Thank you, guys.
Sorry.
It's a, it's a hundred and forty dollars a ton.
We should have done this earlier, so you could have done it. I apologize.
It's okay, I'm just kidding. Have a good night, everyone.
All right, discussion on possible, possible action approval of the twenty-four state home insecurity grant.
Yep, so what we're asking to do is sign the resolution, so that we have access to our grants from the state, and I think they can access to agreements between both municipalities, the state, and, um, the regional judiciary that has changed recently from, um, the college to the east shore district health department, who are responsible for our financial oversight. Basically, what it is, is giving Sals the authority to request, um, on our behalf, and sign the grant, and also request resources, such as if we had a major flood, to get state assets to come in and help us. So we need that in place prior to something happening. And we've done this each time. We did, it was enormous, we only had to do it once, obviously, in Paul, first star, we did it. And now that Sal's here, we have to change it. But this time it's twofold, only because we changed from the pad to the, um, east shore district and Sals there, and maybe back at this again in January. If we have a new first selectman, and it stays the same, then each year, it will take, and we just attest that the selectman has stayed the same for our applications. Does that make sense?
Okay, why is it the twenty twenty-four, the twenty twenty-five?
Because they're going through the grant process now. So they, they allocated the money about a year behind. I just did stuff for the twenty-two, twenty-three grant this week. It's due September third. It's due tomorrow.
So they're really, you know, weird.
Yeah, so, I mean, in the last four years, or three and a half years, I've gotten grants all the way back from two thousand seventeen. That was fantastic. Each year we've been getting, getting caught up, as they say. Because it's, and a lot of it's the state. They call you and say they misplaced the paperwork, don't, you need one more form filled out. It also is back to our FEMA grants, right, reimbursements that we did in two thousand twelve after the storm, and in two thousand seventeen. So that that's all in place. So when we ask for those resources, we have access to them right away.
Yeah.
I wanna see a one side of this.
No, it's, it's, it's. Yeah. Yeah, let's send that on our behalf at a federal level, so, you know. So basically, each little act is our future year. No, we didn't roll, right? So, you know, the other thing is we have access to state assets, such as the burn trailer that we use, um, at the firehouse each year. And by signing this allows us to be able to participate in that.
Is it possible to sign with you? What do you think, Chris?
I move we authorize, uh, for Sals in the day of the signing. Memorandum of agreement, state home insecurity grant program moved into memorandum of agreement for federal fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All favor.
It actually, the thing that actually continues on until such time as we change selection or they change the judiciary district. So that was why.
Well, there's actually a resolution, should we adopt that in the materials?
So somehow the actual resolution.
Result that the town of Ethany may enter with and deliver to state Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary and appropriate and further resolved at salient day, salutary on the day as per selection of the town of Ethany is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town of Ethany and to do and perform all acts and things which he, she deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including by not having to executing, delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by some documents. So that's as clear as...
The, the thing is, is, you know, we were honored, what was it? Sure, this is about FEMA? It was for the storm, but it was three years.
For two.
No, it was like...
It's about three years.
About three years, and we ended up giving back $16,000 to the state when they ordered us for a FEMA that was overbilled due to the fact of, the nicest way to put it is documents that did not clearly state what was actually used during the time of the storm. So basically, that's, that's why they want to be able to have all the documents. Because they have, you know, not only it goes to the state, but it has to go to FEMA or to the federal government under the required trail. And that's what this came down to.
So do we need to pass the resolution there? Do you need that?
Um, well, we have to sign the resolution.
Is the resolution on the email? It's on the packet, right?
Yeah, it is.
How it is? Oh, okay. I, I got it, I got it, I got it.
It's at the end of the...
I think it's a fill-in, Bob, I think because, because Will has to numberize it. So he's gonna have to, I think he says you have to let him have the authority to do that. Because he's gotta fill his name in for everything, and then Will, Will numberize everything tomorrow if you guys agree.
Yes, I think we are saying, saying that he's certifying that we passed this resolution.
Right.
So that's why we passed the resolution. Instead of the more general...
And then he'll fill in all the blanks. That's why he, he has the email, the original email for that, so that's why you guys...
Well, I filled in all the blanks already, he has to sign it.
Alright, Dave, do you have that? It's in the packet, too, that's the resolution. So I move, I move we draft the resolution. It's just red.
You have to have the whole thing down, are you?
No, no. We have a second.
Second.
All favor.
Dave, thank you.
Alright. Okay, 17, we have the contract, the approval of the registered election system software license.
This is a main thing, it's contract?
Yeah, yes, the main thing is contract.
And I'm guessing you don't have any choice because you gotta, you gotta go with the contract and sell the machine.
But the only thing you know that just skimmed briefly, the renewal periods are automatic. I think it took 60 days, get them ratified in 60 days. So you have to mindful of that, or automatically.
They only have pricing through 2027.
Right.
Presumably, they will let you know before then and then...
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean...
Right.
I would just say, we'll do is have Sally sign, what is it, the election system for software contract?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, which is a lot, right?
Right, yeah.
This is, I just thank you, Sally, whoever is responsible for things in the packet. We're not, I'm just saying contracts here, so this is my change.
Alright, so we're working.
We're very trying to stand.
That's all I'm gonna tell you.
Do a second.
Second.
All favor. Alright, we'll get that, let's get the purchase order from them. Um, tax refunds? So we found about $1,709.38, we each won.
Pass that around?
Yeah.
Make sure I'm not going on my own.
How many dollars, yeah?
Said about 10.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11.
That was all.
Several of those same individual. 11 totaling $1,709.38.
Are these, are these all the same, I'm saying? Alright, and now I'm gonna make a motion to approve the refunds.
Seven.
The 11.
All favor.
Aye.
Any other business?
Just wanted to bring up her reservations. Tina Sierra had sent an email saying, she had spoken to us last week, followed up in writing, saying, "I'm a taxpayer, this is, I was requested, I'm getting a written request for a free permit to go to Veterans Park. I'm a landowner in Bethany for over 35 years and a park owner of Woodhaven Country Club for over 50 years until a few years ago, uh, when we sold." But that being said, being a Bethany taxpayer for all these years, it would be very happy to grant your pass as we only live five minutes away in Prospect and we want to watch our two little grandson through a few days a week and we'd love to bring him to the park, thanks for consideration, Tina Sierra. So the context for this is anybody that's out of town, we have a placard that goes on their rearview, costs $150 a year. And otherwise, the only other way to get one is if they have, pay vehicle taxes in, in town. And so she owns land, but she lives in Prospect. So she's a taxpayer, but she doesn't have a car here. So it's kind of this gray area of whether or not she's supposed to pay for a out-of-town pass. So we brought it to you guys because there really is no procedure around that. So that's for discussion.
She owns a house here?
She owns land.
You're building lots. You're by the golf course.
Oh, okay. Also entitles them to, that our transfer station is active, wait, this will have to, take a sticker.
Uh, the, well, that sticker will get them to Veterans Park, so that's what they're paying for. That's what that one, you know, it's a separate, yes, it's a separate sticker that goes on their rearview. But I mean, technically, she, she might request that, but she hasn't. But so far, the only request is to be able to use that.
Does anybody share?
They, the, the constables do rounds, mostly on the weekends because that's when they're here and people tend to want to go down there and use it most more frequently. But when they do rounds around town, they will pop in and see. Most of the time, people don't get tickets, but occasionally, they have towed cars do that are not supposed to be there.
I don't want to talk, she's a tax payer in town as a building owner. She's in town, but what do I have?
Yeah, no, I agree.
But yeah, kind of, we kind of be the same as anybody else's property, but not use it.
Right, exactly.
It's same treatment if they know to ask. Motion, does it just, a motion?
Yeah, we motion. Do, do we have a motion also?
I'm gonna move to grant the request for free pass to Veterans Park to Tina.
Tina Sierra.
Tina Sierra.
Could I ask though, if we're making any, a procedure for going forward, could we make it more general? Possibly saying that if they pay taxes on property, they are allowed to get one? Otherwise, I'm gonna have to bring every individual one here.
That's a good one. I think, I think that would be okay. I mean, we're saying that if you have land here, property here, you can go to the park, I think it's fine.
I have no problem with it.
I think it's for people who have an interest in town, you know, or paying happy.
Got that, Dave? It, uh, taxpayers who own real property but not vehicles are eligible to get free passes to Veterans Park.
Do a second.
Oh, second.
Alright, we have a public comment.
Oh, if you want to move on, I was just wondering, since we're in the other section, wanting to ask if we could, maybe for the next meeting, have an agenda item to kind of discuss the permanent economy recommendations. I, you know, there's, there's a lot of them, and I, I kind of was, at the time, expecting that we should have a continued discussion and I, some of the recommendations that were made and whether or not we wanna give it, give any thumbs up or not.
Do you want to just talk about it internally, or do you want to have a parking record report further on what they've adopted so far?
I mean, that, that's a good idea, yeah, sure, maybe we can...
If a lot of it was...
Yeah.
So update on...
Recommendations.
Right.
Any else under other, if you want? Alright, um, any other public comment?
Couple of things, um, for, for the winter, I guess, we should, so we could go to the old network. Earlier tonight, there was a reference to maybe the grant committee can do blah, blah, blah. There is no grant committee. There was an ad hoc grant committee and that committee made a report to the Board of Selankman three months ago, I think. And at that time, you chose not to take any action until there was the first slot. So, so therefore, there's nobody looking into grants and there's nobody evaluating grant requests. Okay, so I, just, just so you know, there's a, there's a big space out there, there to fill because the last four years, five years now, we have done a tremendous amount of work with grants. And it would be a shame to just miss all of those opportunities.
So they brought recommendations to the Board of Selectment?
Yes.
Okay, but what happens for committee, do they just...
It was an ad hoc committee because the Board of Finance have no authority to be doing that. I mean, they were managing grants and, and such, but couple of times, the, the Board of Selectment previous first slot did not act. And so we, we were miss, we were missing things. There were, you know, for the last couple of years, we missed several opportunities. And, and so we just called in an ad hoc group of people who had main comments or had expressed interest, so. Anyway, that's in the ministry. Is that group sending you?
No.
So if you, you took our report and said, "We'll wait till this first slot", so they, there's not left to that report.
Like what we have, we can maybe put on the agenda or, you know...
Bring that report back and make sure you do it?
Yeah, see, I'm seeing it.
I have a whole, I have a whole, they believe, pre use one and the one that we just did, so you can get context.
Alright, so, so yeah, give me a copy of that and then we'll throw in the agenda for next month.
The, the other thing I just want to suggest is that maybe for, for at least like half the business you have on your agenda, you could have draft resolutions written up before the meetings so that you wouldn't have to draft them on the fly. Wouldn't have to draft them, and there's after you'd agree what you were gonna do and say, oh, yeah, now you gotta figure out what it, what it should be. But just one other thing, while drafting, you might think of some information you did not yet have in front of you or, or whatever when you're sitting here.
Right, and that's a good idea.
We do that with finance.
Right, when you find this just like... No, not, not, I don't mean that, but during the week, it's just, you know.
How many times did you have to write that down tonight?
Yes, I did.
You did? I'm sorry, that, that was...
Alright, um, move to executive session. Do you want me to read all of this in accordance with CJ? For the purpose of, uh, purpose of discussing the payment, I will, I'll build with, like Ben and Leslie and Cheryl.
Do you make a motion?
I don't know. Do you want to?
Yeah. Yeah, why, why are the other people invited?
For finance, I mean, we don't need it, I just thought we had the finance perspective in there, but...
Well, they're, they're supposed to be invited if they're gonna present something to us to help our decision-making. Are we at that point right now?
No, I guess not, well, well.
Maybe.
Maybe?
Yeah, it's part of, a part of the process where finance is gonna have to be part of the conversation. And the information that your finance director can provide is information based upon what's on hand and there might be budgeting concerns or questions that you may have. So, I mean, from my perspective, whether or not they're in or not, I think it's prudent to bring them in, but it's not gonna, for my purposes, not going to undermine my ability to have a conversation to advance our discussion. It's just having them there, I think, will help advance the process should you decide to go in a, in a direction. Does Leslie need to tell us balances or something?
Well, yes, yeah, the balance figures for the account. We know approximately what they are, we don't need to set figures.
Maybe, Tina?
I mean, I, I, I think if, I don't think we've made any decisions on this and I just, I think it would, I think we need to have our space to come, to have a discussion. Unless there's like a report that's being, you know, presented to us, that will, would help our sessions, you know? Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we could hold on.
I can't hear you, so I don't, I don't know what you're saying.
We're just, we're just talking about going into executive session.
Are you, did you say you're in the executive session? Or were you saying you didn't think that...
I, I was asking about whether or not the people in executive session are... I, I was asking about whether or not the people in executive session are going to be presenting reports to, to the Board of Selectmen.
The, the reason that I think I should be here is I would like to be aware of what the thinking is, because next Tuesday, there's a Board of Finance meeting, and hello, I'm assuming what I have in mind is the Board of Finance, we go into executive session then, and that we would discuss this, but without knowing what your thinking is, um.
Yeah, that's not a reason to invite people to like a year, that's.
Well, that's how we've done it for, you know, we're.
I, 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 I.
So I guess, I guess I, I, if you want to, I can go into executive session for the Board of Finance, if you want.
Well, it's, it's, it's really the body politics decision, that sounds like the decision is to go into executive session without anyone other than the town.
Right.
Is that fair?
Okay.
Okay?
All right, just please plan on having someone who's willing to explain what's going on to the Board of Finance, because we have some pretty clear, um, responsibilities related to this.
Yeah, this is a decision.
If we don't make a decision, we have to do something next week.
Whether you do.
If it's appropriate, it's fine, nothing.
I don't care whether I think this may, I worry the Board of Finance.
Who went to this church?
Yes. Move to executive session.
Say, Jeremy.
There was one, yes.